Yeah.
And.
And then they come out with some else.
Yeah, I used to only go.
No problem.
If you don't get it like for three or anything. They move in my. That's how that is. Until she got her surgery and stuff.
Yeah, I know. I'm no crazy way.
It's okay. I thought it was.
Oh, my gosh. If everything is good, it's fun when there now it should all. You know what?
I want to tell them there she had a home that.
I do. I can still do the. It's just not. Oh, hold on. Hold that back. I like it. I just did. Oh, thank you.
Yeah, it's that well. And they love it so. I will say that. Otherwise, I would.
Um, I need to check her.
Yeah. I just wanted to double check.
That's how we look this word.
Oh, sorry. Oh, yeah.
There's something else going on. Okay.
No, no, no. Nice. So not a relationship places. Uh, they're still having time to. What's the? I'm seeing some of the. Just a. Yeah. Hey, if I don't win the. Yeah, that's right. You should be.
In there.
Almost started. Great. Yeah.
Yeah.
I think. You know, I even cost. About the. Probably. So. So. Actually, yeah, she wanted her. It's a title. So. Helen was. He's not. So they never.
I want sort of like. I don't like.
All right. Council. Um, Janine is recording on. We good to go on the. Good. Recording. All right. Through council members, remember when you're speaking to. Now, there we are. Council members, remember when you're speaking to turn your microphones on and speak directly into them. And I, good evening. I'd like to welcome you and call to order the June tenth Port Orchard City Council regular meeting. And in the actions we're about to take, I would like to remind us of our guiding principles. And are we raising the bar in all of our actions? Are we honoring the past but not living in the past? Are we building positive connections with our community and outside partners? And is the decision making process building a diverse, equitable, and inclusive community? Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I took allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the. Our Christian states. One, one nation under God. In the.
All right, council, we have a published agenda. Are there any proposed modifications? Council member Rosa Pepe, just go ahead.
I'd like to add a discussion item on number eight. A discussion item for the council on transportation impact fees.
Motion by Councilman Rose Pepe, second by Councilmember Deener, and this was at the act at the request of Mr. Bond. He may need some information and. Did he? He was looking for some direction from you.
Thank you.
All right, all in favor of adding a discussion item, transportation impact fees, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That item has been added to the agenda this evening. Are there any other council member Chang? Go ahead.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I would like to remove consent agenda item D and make it a business item. Okay, yeah, I don't know if I have to state a reason, but the reason is I just want to state that I'm a employee of DOT and I don't. Benefit financially from this resolution, but we can do that in business.
Okay, so motion to add it because council member Chang, you know, he may have a conflict. Uh, don't see a conflict, but an attorney does it.
No, I just need to. I want to state the connection.
Okay, you could probably state that at the beginning of the consent.
Look, could I? Can I state it now?
Certainly.
Okay. Okay, I just wanted to state that I am a, an employee of Washot. And one of the procedures and right of way mentioned standards by Washot and the federal highways. Even though it is the agency that I work for, I'm not associated with making that decision and I don't benefit financially. However, if anyone would like me to recuse myself from voting on that item, I would be happy to do so.
Council members, you want and council member Chang do recusing.
No.
Okay.
So you're withdrawing your motion then?
Yes.
That's for business. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Consent consent agenda is as it's read.
Is any other proposed amendments? All right, is there a motion to approve?
Yes, Mayor, I move that we approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
With motion by council member Rose Pepe, a second by council member Ternary to approve the agenda as it was amended. All in favor of approving the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? During the agenda has been set for this evening. We are to our first citizen comment period. Anyone wishing to address the council can step to the microphone. Please identify yourself for the record. And then the clerk, you have three minutes to address the council. So you'd step to the microphone, state your name. And you have three minutes to address the council. And if you could raise that microphone up, more close to your mouth, we'll hear you better.
Uh, my name is Kevin Fox. Uh, you need my address as well?
You don't have to.
Okay. Um, I come before you today representing a nonprofit called Communitas. We provide care to adults with developmental disabilities. Uh, and we've been incorporated within Kitsap County since nineteen seventy-one. Um, we have several homes throughout Kitsap County, and we also have about five locations within Port Orchard specifically. Uh, one of our group homes is located on Harrison Avenue. Um, and they've been around since about nineteen eighty. And it's just down the road from City Hall. Recently, some of our employees have started receiving parking tickets when parked, when there's overflow from the driveway. Uh, we are required by the state to provide twenty-four seven care to individuals that we support. And all employees working at the group home are required to have a vehicle and current vehicle insurance. As a result, we can have anywhere between four to six cars parked at that particular residence. Uh, for at least eight hours per shift. Uh, we always ensure to fill up the driveway completely before we have any of our employees park in the streets. Uh. Looking at the different parking options that are available, there doesn't really seem to be something that fits. Uh, we can't buy a parking pass because the employees don't live at the residence. Uh, and we also have regular, unfortunately, we do have regular turnover, turnover of employees. So the vehicles change relatively frequently. Uh. So we're coming before you seeking solutions. Uh. That's all I have to say.
What if you could potentially leave your name and phone number and it may be an email address with the clerk? And potentially our land use committee or staff could to look into your issue and. Maybe find a solution or at least look into the issue for you the best.
Yeah. Yeah, thank you, Kevin.
Right, and if you could. If you step aside there and fill that out.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Let somebody else, if they want to address the council, come to my email. Please step, step forward.
Good evening. Make it shorter. My name is Karen Hayek, and I have a business in downtown. And um, I'm nervous, so I'll see my note. Um, anyway, I put in um, information on the Port Orchard Community page. And I was asked by two councilmen to show up and talk about it. So um, my comment was about the parking. Of course, it's been a downtown issue for everybody. And um, I've been in uh, this kind of business, my resale vintage business for thirty-five years, but I've only been here for five and it's been continuous parking issues that. Every two hours. As a person who has a business, we have to move our cars or we will get ticketed, right? So what happens is we move and we have to lock our stores and go do that and lose customers or whatever. Uh, many customers are complaining about it too. It's not just us business people that are bringing it up. Because now the market, you're, you're ticketing on Saturdays now. So that is really becoming an issue. This last Saturday, I got ticketed three times in a row, an hour within each time. Not two hours. I never parked for two hours straight. And it just is um, aggravating. And I know there's a lot of parking issues downtown because there's not a lot of parking. But um, I just like you guys to, to look at the possibility of. Maybe us business people, if nothing else, we could have an area where we go to because I don't want to park in front of the store and take up space for. All the people that would like to come downtown. And out of the hundred comments that were on my message on Port Orchard Community, many people said they don't even try or they come and they go round and round and round. You know, it's when there's events, I'm, you know, during the week, it's not as bad. So um, I just wanted to come and say. Because I put it on the thing, I thought I better tell everybody, but um, I park up the hill sometimes too because I want to leave the front street open for customers. But then I have to really lock my store, walk up the hill and see if I've been ticketed, you know, marked. And that's something that is. You know, a problem all day long if you're opening your store for the entire day. Also, one of the things is the four hour parking in back. I've done that too, which is fine. I can walk up to my store. But I still have to check it in four hours and leave my store again. So um, we need some some solutions because people are very frustrated with this. As I found when I wrote my little note on Port Orchard Community page, I was shocked that I had so much response. And it was all because against the issues that the town has for parking. So the other item is this.
Excuse me, but your time is up for.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you, Karen.
Come for council member Fenton, please wait to be recognized before you speak.
Oh, I just, I wanted to tell her thank you.
I'll take care of that. Thank you. Others wishing to address the council.
Good evening. My name is Pat St. Laurent. I am a resident of downtown Port Orchard. I'm pretty sure most of you know why I'm here. Uh, because every single night, the peace and quiet of downtown is disturbed substantially by drivers of cars that are extremely loud. The drivers are extremely disrespectful, uh, and both in terms of the noise they make and also the speed at which they race down Bay Street. Every single night of the week, somewhere between eight thirty and sometimes two AM. Um, there's a handful of us that have been in touch with the port. We know what's going on with the signs. We know what's going on with regards to the police force and their ability to. Enforce in the parking lot, which is not an excuse for the absence of any kind of patrol on Bay Street. Um, and to be honest with you, we've kind of had it. It's been going on for a long time. We sat here three years ago having a conversation about this. Uh, we had an email communication back in September. I came to council in January and we had more communication after that. And last night and the night before and tonight, it'll be exactly the same. So. Those are my comments. And there's a few people behind me who probably will express similar comments.
Okay, thank you, Pat.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Others wishing to address the council this evening. Please step forward.
Hi, Kity City Council. My name is Kelly May. I'm here to address the excessive noise from car revving racing lane into the night in downtown on Bay Street. We have law-abiding, tax-paying citizens suffering from lack of sleep, and this needs to be addressed immediately. According to Medical News Today and Healthline, lack of sleep affects the health of the entire body. This has been going on for a very, very long time. It reduces the ability of memory in the brain to learn, increases production of stress hormones, hurts our cardiovascular system, increase risk of disease. Increase risk of infection, weight gain, and reduction in fertility in males and females. Also, less killer T cells in the body to fight off things like cancer. Instead of just coming to complain, I've brought a few solutions that might actually help if implemented. Number one is have officers or volunteers patrol downtown every night for about two to three weeks. Giving tickets to every offender every night. This would solve the issue if the consequences were unfavorable enough. Only light patrolling would be needed thereafter to keep the peace moving forward. The second one is to update our noise ordinances, put speed bumps and noise cameras that would take pictures of license plates. And issue tickets automatically of offenders. The third is to raise awareness for needed respect and kindness to our sleep-deprived citizens by partnering with car clubs. And designating a daily time or spot for car enthusiasts to hang out and rev their engines and to not disturb the peace moving forward. Thank you.
Very common.
Thank you.
Go ahead. Yep. Wait.
Hello, Ian Wilhelm, my own Unity Skate Shop downtown. Um, I'm here to bring up the noise downtown also every evening, which is uh, usually starting about ten o'clock, going sometimes three thirty, four thirty in the morning. Um, it is the cars very loud. Uh, and then there's also they're racing up and down Bay Street. Uh, it's been going on for a few years now. Um, we've called the police a few times. Um, I've gone down there, go down there quite often to try and calm situations or try and stop or whatever. Uh, but they, there's, there's drinking going on. It's not always kids. There's also Navy personnel down there. Um, and they get. They get pushy when you tell them, hey, can you guys stop? Uh, you guys are, we have people right here living in the hillside. It's loud. Uh, we get a lot of pushback. I always film it on my phone. I have lots of videos and lots of pictures. Um, but if you guys really want to see what they're doing, drive up Port Orchard Boulevard and you'll see the screech marks all over the road, all the way from the top to the bottom. There's burnout marks all over the place. Um, we're just hoping to. Put a, put a stop to it. It's, it's very, it's, it's getting crazy. And with summer coming up here, um, it's probably gonna increase more. So. Um, we'd like to see some kind of increase in patrols. One of the issues with the patrols, though, is you can see the patrol cars, and I've been down there a couple of times. Uh, after calling the police and hoping to meet them down there, but you can see the patrol cars coming. So the kids or whoever's down there will either turn their music down or hide their alcohol. Um, or do whatever they can to, when they see the police come. So. I don't know what this, how to solve it because a lot of it is kids and it is our kids. But uh, it's not all our kids. I've seen older people there, lots of, like I said, Navy personnel. Um, and then you have all the homeless down there in the winter that hang out underneath and sleep underneath the gazebos and stuff. So you get the mix of the two and we've seen fights. We've seen, I mean, all kinds of craziness going down there at night. I don't know if cameras might help or. Added patrols and I, I'm not sure what the answer or solution is, but um, it's been going on for a while and with summer coming up, it's gonna be. Pretty uh, pretty crazy.
I appreciate that comment and we are working with the port. It is the port's property.
Understand.
Yeah, and there, and they need for us to be able to trespass the people. They need to, there's a certain signage that they have to put down for our police officers to be able to take action.
It's a nice place to hang out, you know, in the evening, but uh.
We don't, we, if, if they're not behaving, so.
Yeah.
It's difficult for our police officers to do much unless they're acting out in the moment, which you're, if you're indicated, they don't. So that's, that's the unfortunate thing. So appreciate.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, since you kind of cracked that up a little bit, I just want to advise that this is something we're seeing all over Port Orchard. Yeah. Um, I hear, I, I live over Kaiser Permanente Clinic and I hear it. Until about two o'clock in the morning. Um, so it's, it's, it's something that we're all facing, just about anywhere we live in Port Orchard and the surrounding areas.
And, and when I see, I visit other cities, I'm, it's, it's unfortunate behavior everywhere, not just in Port Orchard. It's, it's, yes, ma'am, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Josephine Blanton, and I live on Kitsap Street. And I too have the issue with the noise volume. Um, and I would like to think that the city council would um, want to be proactive on this, especially since all the growth in downtown. Um, I, I would think the condos that are being built, I certainly want to, would not buy a condo because of the noise volumes. So I think the council and the city needs to be a little bit proactive so that we can grow the community. Uh, but at this point. I wouldn't buy anything down here, Port Orchard. I did twenty years ago when it was quiet, but it's no longer the same.
Thank you for your comment.
Thanks.
Who else? Anybody else wishing to address the council? Go ahead. Jerry, we haven't seen you in ages. Welcome back.
Thank you.
You don't have an old garage here. Okay, my name is Jerry Harmon. I live on Kitsap Street. And um, I got a notice about this and I have heard the. Revving up of the cars and it sounds like they're racing through town. So I wanted to come down tonight and find out about the issue. But while I was sitting here, it brought back memory or it's still current memories. I really think that getting, I know that they're expensive, but the cameras on. Bay Street and Sydney and probably um, the same thing at Tremont and Sydney. Because the number of people that run the lights is phenomenal. I had a Kitsap transit bus come through on me last summer. I've had um, a double tanker septic tank. Um, guy that did not want to stop. And this is where the light had been totally green for me to pull out because. I've learned that I have to look both ways after the light turns green. And I think it could bring in a lot of income. Because I don't think I've ever been at that light lately, that there isn't a person that runs that light after the people coming down that have the right to pull out. And so it slows me pulling down as an old person. I want to make sure that it's clear. So then people behind me are held back. But I think that it also, if you could get a few, and I was thinking, well, what's going to stop them? I think it's got to be costly and it's got to be time consuming. So a new law that anybody brought in for um. Racing through town or extreme noise in that being part of a race team, that maybe it should be a week in jail, no exemptions. And um, a high charge, maybe five hundred dollars just for um. Costing him. If it costs him that a few times, they might change their mind. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you.
Go ahead. Come on.
My name is Ron Ryder. And uh, I too am here about the noise because tired to go into bed at night with a loud fan next to my bed and earplugs in, so I don't have to listen to these people on the waterfront. Um. I used to like to live downtown, but not so much anymore. It's uh, we're investing all this money in City Hall, new pump station, uh, new city center. But we aren't taking care of the problems down here. I realize there's problems all over the city. But we don't have enough police presence downtown. I presented the mayor and the police chief. Assigned petition over three years ago, expressing about ten people's concerns with the noise. expressing about 10 people's concerns with the noise. And we were told that they didn't have the resources, they didn't have enough police on staff. Well, now I hear we've got the most police on staff that we ever have. And I, as a taxpayer, I want to see something going on down there, not just some cop driving through on his way home or to another, to another call. We need, we need regular police policing downtown. It would probably work if somebody had an unmarked car. They could sit over there behind Peninsula Bevco and observe it firsthand. But I was a former city councilman, and I would more, be more than happy to donate my time to sit down with a committee and try and come up to with some solutions for this. And I would recommend that some kind of ordinance be drafted to take care of the loud noise, so that not just downtown, but people racing or people revving their engines, which is going on all over, police can pull them over wherever they're at, get a decibel meter out and say, you're over the limit. You've got 30 days to fix it, or you're getting a ticket. That's just one idea that, that came up. A lot of ideas are all Wild West stuff, and I prefer not to go there. Let's see. I mean, I've got videos. I've called 911 multiple times. At some point, when nothing ever changes, it's like, why am I wasting my time? So it, I hope that we don't have to get a bigger group of people down here to complain before we see some action downtown. And feel free to give me a call and, and I'm, I'll make time to sit down with the committee and, and we can hash over some ideas. I know the port's on board.
Ron, your time's up this evening.
Okay. They said that their boaters are fed up, too.
Yeah, thank you.
Others wishing to address the council. And we are waiting on the port to put up the signs so that we can enforce it, so that the ball's in the court's hands. So, all right, not seeing anybody else raising their hand. I'm going to close the first citizen comment. Oh, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Tamara Peterson. I'm a resident of City of Port Orchard. I'm, my home is actually right on Bay Street. And besides the commotion at the park, there is tremendous amount of racing up and down Bay Street every night. And one of the things that I noticed is that people are saying, well, the Port of Bremerton is in control or in charge of the park down there, but the street, I would believe, is the responsible of the Port Orchard Police Department. So I don't see many cars go up and down that street at night at 25 miles an hour. And that's what it is, and they are not going 25 miles an hour. So this is a problem that it's mostly during the evening, but when they go at that speed, they are revving their engines, they are backfiring, they are doing whatever they want to make noise. And it seems like when you go on the community pages and you say anything, you get this backlash of, oh, it's just a bunch of kids having fun. But these are residences that are trying to sleep and live and watch a movie and talk to their family members. So I'm really asking that something be done, whether it's those blinking lights that say yours, the speed limit is 25, you are going 35, or, you know, whatever it is. So if there's anything I can do to help, I would be glad to do that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Yep. Why not, Mary? See you back there.
Hi there. My name is Mary Johnson. I'm a citizen here at Port Orchard. And everything's already been said, but I didn't want to sit there and think, let you think that it didn't bother me. It does have an effect on health, sleep, on children going to school if they're woken up in the middle of the night because of the noise, and they can't get back to sleep, and then they come to school and they're dragging and confused. And all the things that have listed, I have my list here, too, but I just wanted to be part of this. Actually, I had something here. I wanted to play for you, but I don't think it'll, it'll work, so. Yeah, it's not gonna work. But anyway, I just wanted to say that I'm in with everybody else, and I didn't want to sit there and think, have you think that I wasn't. So, thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Thanks.
Any last? All right, last call, councilman? Okay. Thank you. Janine, go ahead and bring whoever's in on their online. If you want to wish to address the council and you're online, please use the raise your hand feature, and the clerk will bring you into the meeting.
Okay, we do have a couple attendees, and no one has raised their hand yet.
Okay. All right, I'm going to close the first citizen comment period, the second section in detail end of the meeting. And we're gonna move on to our consent business items. The first is our consent items.
Consent, yeah. I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. Okay. Motion by Councilmember Rosa Pepe, a second by Councilmember Deener, to approve the consent agenda as presented.
No, it's not.
As amended.
It wasn't amended. No, that's what I said, just that's presented.
As presented.
It was discussed.
All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Consent agenda has been approved for this. We have two presentations. The first is a repeat for those on the sewer advisory committee who got this this afternoon. But we have a presentation on our sewer rate study. Mr. Ryan, or Mr. Crocker, this is actually you.
I'm good.
Tag team over there?
It's, it's both of us, but I'm gonna do the introductions, and Director Crocker is gonna assist in all the financial and rate information from the city's perspective. So I wanted to introduce our consultants. We have Tagi Acker from the FCS Group, and then Zach Hazel, also present from Bowman Group. They are going to present on the sewer rate study. The city is actually undertaking two studies right now. We are in the middle, or we are at the tail end of our general sewer plan update, which we will have in draft this month. That will come in front of the council at a future date. And then we've also been working on this rate study. So with that, we'll turn it over to our consultants.
Thank you. Good evening, council. So as Dennis mentioned, we've got the results of a sewer utility rate study. And our agenda tonight will be in three different pieces. We'll talk about the, next slide, please. The revenue requirement, the cost of service analysis, and the rate design task. So each of these elements answers a key question in a comprehensive rate study. We'll first talk about the revenue requirement. And essentially what that is, is how much revenue do you need to recover from customers to pay for the costs of the sewer utility? Operating, capital, annual debt service. So it's more of a revenue sufficiency analysis. And then Zek will talk about the cost of service analysis and the rate design. So if the revenue requirement is trying to determine how big is the pie, how much revenue do you need, the cost of service analysis looks at how do you slice up that pie amongst your different customer groups? And then lastly, the rate design will be proposing an alternative rate structure different than what you're currently doing, but one we think that is simpler and more fair for the customers of your sewer utility. So for the revenue requirement, you know, we typically start with your adopted budget for operations and maintenance. We look at a couple of years of actual revenues and expenditures, compare that against the budget, and that essentially forms the basis of our cash flow forecast. We also incorporate annual debt service payments that you have for existing outstanding loans, principal interest payments, and also make sure that you have enough in your reserve accounts to handle any sort of emergency types of things that come up, working capital reserves for the day-to-day fluctuations and revenues and expenditures. So that's, that's more or less what we're doing with the revenue requirement, and we'll get into more details with the cost of service analysis and the rate design further on in the presentation. Before we get into the results, wanted to note where the rates have been. And so this is a screenshot of rates from 2016 through 2020. This is just one of your roughly 20 customer classes, single-family residential. In 2016, the rates were for every two months, $111 for a typical single-family customer. That has increased to $163 by 2020, and it's been at that level since 2020. No changes since that time. So comparing that rate of $163 against what's been happening with Consumer Price Index inflationary measures, on slide five, please. Perfect, yeah. You can see somewhat of a loss of buying power where back in 2020, $163, if that rate had increased with inflation, it'd be close to $200 every two months. It's still at $163. So loss of buying power there, in part has been helped with strong customer growth, adding new customers that pay that bi-monthly rate as well, but there are some catching up to do with some of the cost inflation we've seen the past few years.
And Tagi, I just want to add, for the council members, I put three copies on the desk in between, paired up by two, so you each can share. But the full rate class of our sewer rate code, so when we talk about restructuring, take a look at what's in front of you there. I wanted you guys to be able to see all different rate classes, the 21-plus, different sewer rate classes that we have to administer, which we'll talk about later, proposing a change.
Thank you. All right, next slide, please. We'll touch briefly on financial policies. There are two policies that are called out in a, an adopted resolution. There's the general reserve, which is 60 to 90 days worth of operating revenues. That's to make sure that the operating fund is well-functioning, that there are, you know, daily, weekly, monthly variations in revenues and expenditures, making sure you have enough in there to cover payroll and other types of expenses that come up. There's a second reserve that is set. We don't touch as a part of the rate study. It's more of an emergency type of reserve, and that's roughly 25% of annual operating expenditures. So two types of reserves that we're making sure are maintained throughout the study period, which goes through 2030. And then lastly, debt service coverage. This would apply if you're going out for revenue bonds. Right now, the sewer utility just has state loans, so this doesn't really apply, but if you were to go out for revenue bonds in the future, we just make sure that the rates are set to cover the minimum requirements in terms of debt service coverage. So the legal minimum typically is net revenue of the sewer utility has to be 1.25x annual debt service. And that's essentially a cushion, so that if there's a little bit of variations of revenues or expenditures, some unexpected changes, that makes bondholders more comfortable that you can make that debt service payment throughout typically what is a 20-year term for revenue bonds. All right, so one of the key things we wanted to note for today is the rates that we're calculating and will be recommending are set based on the cost of providing service, operations, maintenance, capital projects, you know, there's all sorts of costs that we build into the rate study. But typically, it's those two buckets, operations and maintenance and capital. Operations and maintenance, that's a little bit more predictable, more steady year-to-year. The capital projects really vary year-to-year depending on how many projects you're undertaking in a given year and what the size of those projects are. So we try to balance all of that over a six-year period to make sure that you have enough money coming in to cover your costs in what we hope is more of a steady fashion in terms of rate adjustments. Next slide, please. So I noted that we typically start with your adopted budgets. We have the 25, 26 adopted budget in the rate forecast. The forecast period goes through 2030. And so we take that 26 budget and more or less, we increase it anywhere from 3% to 5% per line item, depending on what the type of line item it is. General inflationary type line items will be about 3%. Medical benefits will be about 5%. What you pay for treatment services, that goes up by about 3% per year as well. That just gives us an estimate of what we think the operating expenditures will be throughout the life of the forecast. In terms of how you pay for capital projects, that has an impact on the rate study as well. You know, there's cash, and then there's debt. You know, some benefits for cash is that you avoid interest costs that you'd get if you were to borrow for it. But one drawback of paying cash only is that existing customers pay the cost of the capital projects, where one benefit of borrowing spreads that capital cost over, say, a 20-year repayment period. As new customers connect to the utility, they begin paying the bi-monthly rate, part of which goes to cover the annual debt service payment. So there are some pros and cons of using cash or debt. One benefit of debt is, as we've seen the past few years, you know, cost inflation has been pretty significant, in particular for capital projects. So to the extent that you can complete projects a little quicker by borrowing for a portion of the capital projects, you can avoid some of the impacts of cost inflation if you were to do it in the next one or two years versus four or five years down the road. So there are some benefits there, but typically, we recommend some sort of hybrid approach where you have rates coming in each year, paying for a part of the capital program. For some of your larger projects, we recommend, you know, borrowing in part to help spread that cost over a longer time period. Those are some of the policy items that we considered as a part of the rate study. The next slide, we talk about the capital improvement program. It's roughly $50 million over the next six years or so. And these are unescalated, so we apply that 3.5% estimated cost inflation to these figures, which would bring that total six-year capital spend to about $60 million. Pretty small font, but you can see at the top there more of your annual repair and replacement type projects. You have quite a few lift and pump stations, force main, some small projects and large projects, but all of that feeds into the rate forecast. And on the next couple of slides, we talk about how do you fund those capital projects? So starting out at a 30,000-foot level, we have the annual capital spending here shown in the green and orange stacked columns. The green portion, somebody else is paying for that portion of the capital projects, the county, WashDOT developer agreements. The orange portion of the stacked column, that would come from utility rate payers, whether it's rates, whether it's borrowing and using rates to pay for debt service, using cash on hand in reserves to pay for a portion of the capital program. That's the general mix. It's roughly 50/50. And on the next slide, we have the capital funding strategy broken out into more components. We have quite a few low-cost loans that the city has secured. You can see them listed on the far right there, quite a few less than 1% interest rates. The largest one, about 2.6% interest for the Marina Pump Station. Those are really good rates. If you were to go out to borrow today, it'd be closer to 5%. So, you know, kudos on the city and city staff for going after these low-cost loans and securing them. That definitely helps reduce the costs that would eventually make it into the rates that customers pay. We do anticipate some additional borrowing in the next three or four years. That's the orange slice, revenue bonds, about 20% of the capital program. Small slice of grants, not much. And then there's about 36% of the capital funding strategy would come from either WashDOT, Kitsap, or developer agreements. That's a big chunk of your capital program. Capital facilities charges, that's about $5 million. That's fees that, as new development, new customers connect to the system, they pay a one-time fee that would go directly towards paying for future capital projects. That's that pink slice there. And then about 30% of the capital funding strategy would come from rates and cash you already have in the bank. And rates would be for cash-funded or to pay for some of the debt service on future borrowing.
And if I may, that, that slice where it says Kitsap, that's large, it's Kitsap Transit and the lift station out of Ruby Creek that I believe that's, that's what that represents, not Kitsap County.
All right, so this is the last slide for the revenue requirement. What we have here are the stacked columns. These are, these are your financial obligations through 2030. The green portion, that's your operating and maintenance. 25, 26 is the budget. 27 through 2030 is the budget with those inflation assumptions applied to the various line items. And then that orange slice is debt service, both existing and new debt. And then that orange slice is debt service, both existing and new debt service. You see a bump there in 2028 as we project there to be some borrowing. That's the principal and interest payments that would be associated with that debt issuance. And so overall revenue needs for the next six years or so would be, would require 3.5% additional revenue per year. So if you were to keep your current rate structure, in, in a few minutes, we'll be talking about an alternative to your current structure. But right now, single family customers pay about $163 every two months. 3.5% per year would increase that to about $169 in 2026, $175 in 2027, so on and so forth to 2030, where it'd be about $194. Again, that's, that's your current structure. An alternative that we will be recommending will actually show an initial decrease to the single family sewer rate and ending at quite a bit lower than $194 you see on the far right. But my colleague Zach will walk you through the next couple of tasks, cost of service and rate design.
All right, thank you, Tagi. As Tagi mentioned, he was walking you through the revenue requirement, which sets the overall needs of the utility in terms of a rate perspective. Now we're going to talk about how to divide up the revenue requirement between your different classes. In other words, as Tagi used the example, we determined how big the pie is, and now we're going to slice the pie between the different customer classes. You can see on this slide, probably a little hard to read, that's okay. We got 18% of the existing revenue collection comes from your non-residential customers and 82% come from your residential customers. And those are the two classes that we're going to examine for this cost of service analysis. So this slide is basically a diagram showing you how we would conduct a cost of service analysis at a high level. We start at the top of this diagram with your base revenue requirement. That's how much you need to collect in rates. And then we divide that cost up into three different cost buckets. We have your customer costs, which is really related to billing issues and that kind of dealing with your customer accounts. And then you have flow costs, which are really related to your collection system, your lift stations, those kinds of costs. And then lastly, you have your treatment costs. And those costs are very directly billed with the joint sewer agreement. And that is just, yeah, just a line item in your, in your budget. Now, each of these different costs are incurred by different customer statistics, if that makes sense. So for example, for the customer costs, you're going to have to issue more bills as you add more accounts to the system. That is a direct correlation there between accounts and customer costs. And so when we do the cost of service analysis, we determine how much of your cost bucket goes into customer costs. In this case, 180,000. And we divide that up between your classes based on how many accounts those two classes have. So for example, the residential class has 94% of your accounts and the non-residential class has 6% of your accounts. And so that is how we divide up the cost for customer billing expenses. 94% goes to residential or 169,000 and 6% goes to non-residential or 11,000. And then we do this for all three functions, customer flow and treatment, to determine the overall cost to serve each class. And this next slide gives a summary of that analysis. So this shows each class's cost recovery as a percentage of the cost to serve that class. So to make that very concrete, you notice that residential is listed as 107%. What that means is that residential currently is paying 107% of its cost to serve. It's overpaying by about 7% relative to its overall revenue. On the other hand, if you look at non-residential, they are paying 76% of their cost of service. So there's a gap there that they're being subsidized from the residential class. They're only paying 76% of the cost that it actually costs to serve that class. Now, we, when we do these analyses, there's a lot of wiggle room, a lot of assumptions we have to make. So we would say that if it's within 5% on either end of that line, we might say it's good enough. In this case, we can see a clear gap between non-residential and its cost of service, as in they are not paying their full share. So that gives us the guidance on the cost of service analysis to then go into the rate design step of the analysis. And in the rate design step, we're going to basically figure out how to actually bill these customer classes to collect fairly the cost of service and to collect the revenue requirement that Tagi talked about. And lastly, we're going to add a couple other goals for this rate design thing. So just, we're doing three things at once, collecting all the revenue we need and we're collecting all the revenue that's accrued to each class. And lastly, we're going to make a couple rate design changes that the staff has proposed. So the current rate schedule, as Noah described and is in front of you, is somewhat complex. It has 21 different rate classes and each class, some of them might have multiple rates within that class. So it's very complicated rate schedule. Now, there are some advantages to a rate schedule of that complexity, but in general, there are also some major disadvantages. For one, a rate schedule this long is difficult for customers to understand and figure out how much they're going to be billed. It's also very burdensome for staff who have to check how many laundry machines are going into a laundromat or something like that, or count the chairs in a restaurant to make sure that they're fitting into the large restaurant category and not the small restaurant category. So there's a lot of burden going on the staff for administrating this rate schedule. And the other thing is that it really obscures the relationship between the impact on the sewer system that a particular customer might have and the cost that it takes to, to serve that particular customer. A large restaurant, for example, gets a flat rate of, I think, something over $900 per month. And that it is just a flat rate, doesn't matter how much flow that large restaurant is putting into the sewer system. They get billed something over 900 a month. So you can see that that kind of obscures the relationship between the impact on the sewer system and the rate they're paying. So all those issues combined have basically led to the city staff wanting to simplify the rate schedule. And we think we've figured out a way to do that. But we have to take a small detour first before we get to our proposed solution.
Can I ask a quick question around that?
Yeah, sure.
I didn't know if I was supposed to wait to the end. Okay, I just have a question about one of the comments you just said about the, the, the usage in a restaurant, right? And it being flat, it's the same at the residential rate too, right? I live in the same sized house as my neighbor. There's two people in my house and there's seven next door. I don't believe their usage is most likely going to be the same as mine.
That, that is very fair. One thing I will say is that on average, residential accounts tend to have much more similar flow. Now, in your example, that those two might have very different flows. But if you look to a commercial side of thing, it's really variable depending on the size of the business, how much business they're actually doing. So your, your point is well taken, a particular ERU might have more or less usage than average. But residential does tend to be more concentrated around the average usage than a non-residential account would be.
Our biggest expense in the sewer operation is the processing when it gets to the, the Westside Utility. And so in this analysis that they've done, they've measured our average flows in our winter months so that we're not, we know that we're not counting irrigation systems. And so that's how we've, so just like our water analysis and the consumption model that we went to with water. So more water you use, the more you're going to pay. And that's, this is where we're heading. This, this recommendation is we're measuring the flows and, you know, the more, the higher the flow you're generating, the, the more impact you're having to the system and the more you should have to pay.
I got a question.
Go ahead, council member.
But on the house, the house that you brought up, it would still be the same though, between two people and a household. So even though you got the flow going, that's, what counts is just the house itself.
That, that is correct. We don't have meters on the.
I have the same on the sewer.
Payment as my neighbor does.
Exactly, that's correct, yep.
I see council member Warden has his hand raised, go ahead, council member.
Yeah, with restaurants, though, it's also a different level of service that's required. We're required to deal with their grease traps, the amount of fog that they put into the lift stations and down the sewer lines, which requires more flushing. There's a, definitely there is difference in the level of service that they require. It make, it does make sense to me, it's more than just a flow. I wish there was more flow from restaurants to try to lessen the impact of the fog. But the fog definitely makes a huge difference coming from restaurants. They can have grease traps all they want, they're still, there's, there's still quite a bit and our lift stations reflect that.
Yeah. So, yeah, very, very good point, council member. Other comments at this point? I'm going to continue with.
Eric, what's fog?
Fats, oils and grease.
Okay, thanks.
So if I may.
Yes.
Not only do we have more resources required for what you're calling non, non-residential or basically business community, but we also had more administrative costs with factoring in our current rate structure, which is crazy. Yet they're paying a very, a much smaller amount. And as you, using your term, they're not paying their fair share at this point, is that correct?
Yeah, that seems to be the, the conclusion of the cost of service analysis.
All right, thanks.
That's right. All right, so we are going to propose a much simpler way and equitable way and collecting the revenue requirement that Tagi talked about. We're going to propose a rate design that does all three things. So first, a bit of background. Port Orchard and West Town Utilities District, they share the South Kitsap Water Reclamation Facility. Their agreement began in 1983 and it was last updated in 2014. Every winter, there is a count of the equivalent residential units in each district. An equivalent residential unit, also called ERU, is just a way of determining, measuring how much flow a business might send into the sewer system. And we're going to base that on the average usage of a single family dwelling unit. That's, that's why it's called an equivalent residential unit. For the agreement, a ERU is defined in this way. Every residence, every dwelling unit gets one ERU. So one single family residence gets an ERU, one apartment gets an ERU, every residence gets one ERU. For non-residential customers, you take their flow and you divide it by 180 gallons per day or 700 CF. And that is their equivalent residential units or ERUs. And this is only measured during the winter months to determine their flow to the sewer system and not counting any irrigation, because we assume there's not doing, they're not doing any irrigation in the winter months. So this next slide gives us some background. So we took a look at the, the water billing stats that we could get to determine the actual equivalent residential unit calculation for a single family residence in Port Orchard. And we determined that it's actually closer to 117 gallons per day, not 180 gallons per day that we just showed you on the previous slide. And basically what that's saying is that we are actually, single family residences are actually sending a lot less sewer flow to the system than the SKWRF agreement assumes. And that kind of puts more pressure on the single family customers, all the residential customers really, to collect more of the cost of the sewer utility, because we're presuming that they're sending more flow to the, the treatment facility than they actually are. And so to kind of solve for this discrepancy and make sure that we're fairly charging the sewer rates, we had basically three options. The first option would be to change the agreement with SKWRF to change the definition of a ERU to something closer to 117 gallons per day. But we did not presume that was going to be possible. So that the other option would be to basically use two ERU definitions and say, for this business, they have perhaps five ERUs under our metrics and three ERUs under the SKWRF agreement. That also seems more complicated than it needs to be. You'd have to keep track of two different counts of ERUs. So our conclusion was we could instead use a weighting factor for those non-residential customers, where we count the ERUs precisely as we do already for the SKWRF agreement, but we charge them a, a higher rate per ERU to fairly recover the costs of their flow. All right. So this rate calculation table basically has everything I just talked about summarized in one table. So at the top here, we have the ERUs per the SKWRF contract for residential, 56, 5700 really, for non-residential, 1100. Then in that next section, we have the cost of service by class. This is again totaling up all the costs for customer costs, flow costs, treatment costs. Residential is 5.2 million and non-residential is 5.6 million. And then this last section takes the cost of service and divides it by the number of ERUs and divides it by the number of billing periods, which is six, to get the bi-monthly rate per ERU. So this is that weighting factor I was talking about. You'll see that residential is paying $151 under this proposed method for fiscal or calendar year 26. And non-residential is paying $235, so that's that weighting I was just talking about. They're paying more per ERU, but you keep to continue counting their ERUs as you already do for the SKWRF agreement. So that's all very abstract, let's get more concrete by looking at some sample bills. The first one here is a residential customer. Under their current, under the current system, they pay $163 bi-monthly or $978 annually. Under this new system, they would pay 151, 58 bi-monthly or 909 annually. And so their built, their bi-monthly rates actually decrease. And that's because, like I showed you before, we're trying to bring non-residential up to speed for their actual cost of service. That actually gives residential customers a break. And later in this presentation, I'll show how their rates change through 2030 under this proposed method as well.
I got a quick question for you. So under the previous slide, slide 23, you show the residential rate would be 151 and non-residential 234. What was the non-residential number before, or current, I should say, the current number?
Yeah, that, that's a, that's a great question. And that gets back to that rate schedule that you have with 21 different rates. There really isn't a single rate per year you for non-residential because of that rate schedule.
Okay, so while we've got that for residential, we don't for non-residential.
Yeah, exactly. So the residential rate is $163 per year you, non-residential totally depends on which class they are.
And how many fixtures you have.
Right.
Fixer counts.
Yeah, and so that's why I handed out those, the, the code. If you look at the code, just grab a couple, you'll see all the different rate classes. And then you have to piecemeal it together by business type and by business category. So there is not a specific answer.
I just want to be sure I was following the table.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I think it's going to make a lot more sense as he gives you more examples.
Yes, I have a great example on this next slide here. This is a small school. So the top table shows the current billing method, the bottom table shows our proposed meth, proposed method. As you'll see in the top table, we are counting 132 units. And now units totally depends on the rate class, but in this case, it means any personnel, students, janitorial staff, teachers, anybody in the building. And they get billed at 490 per unit. So in this example, this small school would pay 646, 80 bi-monthly or 3800, 3900 really annually. Now, when we look at their actual sewer flows based on the, the count this, the city already does for the SKWRF agreement, we'll see that they actually only have one ERU of usage, right? So they should really be, be billed at this 234, 99 rate. That's that rate we calculated earlier for the, for commercial customers.
So I'm going to throw a wrench at you. I happen to know that that small school, which is an elementary school, is not hooked to sewer. It is hooked, they have a, don't they have a tank and a grinder, and a grinder pump? And are we making sure that we're covering our costs by changing the structure, the cost to pump that out?
I'm unfamiliar with the locations, I hadn't seen that, so.
I can speak to that. When we do this analysis, we take all of the sewer billing data and we figure out how much these, these individual customers paid. So this, this customer, at least in the, up to 2022, was paying a sewer bill at that rate.
They, they do, it's just that, I just want to make sure that we're capturing, we, we have different costs for this particular customer that you're. And so as, as we dive into this deeper, we need to make sure that we're, we're covering that cost. So sorry to interrupt.
Yeah, no worries. I mean, if they're not sending flow to the system, then they probably shouldn't be.
Yeah.
How many of these quote unquote, small schools do we have, are we talking about?
Sidney Glen.
Single one, okay.
Yeah, probably Sidney Glen, it might be the middle school too, but I'm not, that's, I think it's got more than 132. There's one, there's one grade school.
I think there's at least two then, because.
Are there businesses that have the same treatment? Are there other businesses that have the same treatment as Sidney Glen using?
I'm aware of one.
Okay.
Is Eric, Eric, you had your hand raised?
Yeah. Forgive me for not remembering your name. The presenter just said whether they're contributing to the system or not. Are we, are we billing vacant buildings, vacant commercial buildings? Are we billing them?
If they, to maintain their sewer connection, they have to pay their cost.
So the vacant commercials that we see, they're paying, they're paying a monthly, bi-monthly.
They, they could disconnect from the system and not pay it. Most vacant buildings do not, because you would lose your capital facilities charge. They have to pay those connections and those are tens of thousands of dollars.
So they are paying, so I mean, I'm just curious to answer.
Yeah, so.
They are paying.
They should be unless they've disconnected from the system and then they have lost their capital facilities charge. And then that building, if that property ever was remodeled and, or redeveloped, they would have to pay, pay the capital because they no longer have a connection. And by maintaining that connection and paying that bill every month. And by maintaining that connection and paying that bill every month, they get credit. So when that, you know, it gets repurposed or whatever happens with that property, they get credit for the connection that they have.
There's, there's some good sized, there's some good sized commercial sites that are vacant and they're just donating money to us every month or every bimonthly.
They, they could be, they could be. It's, 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 there is no yes or no answer to this. It would vary from property to property and.
If I, if I, if I called you tomorrow and I asked you a question on a certain property or asked Mr.
Yeah, shoot me an email and, and we'll look into it.
Sounds good.
Okay.
I like that question.
All right, so this is an example of even though we showed you earlier that non residential is underpaying, that's, that's an average. And so some customers, like this one, would actually see a decrease in their bill under their proposed method. This next customer, however, is, uh, an example of a large restaurant. Now, as I mentioned earlier, they get paid as flat rate, they pay a flat rate of $978 bimonthly. When we looked at this customer, they actually had 11 ERUs in the 2024 count of usage. And so their bill would actually go up, uh, quite substantially up to 2584 bimonthly or 15,000, um, annually. So some customers are underpaying at, obviously, as I've demonstrated with the cost of service analysis, some customers are underpaying and will need to have their bills increase under this new method. This next one is a very stark example.
How many large restaurants do we have in the city?
Fast food, I would think primarily, there might be a few.
Is there one? I, I, I don't know, 150 seats or more. I, I don't know of one off the top of my head.
Have any.
Or Divarra, sorry.
Ah, good call. Thank you, Councilmember Warden.
Yeah, okay.
It could be, yeah, it could be.
That, that serves an increase for the large restaurant.
Remember, we're basing this on their, your flows, your use and your impact to the system. So this, this one is really.
Yeah.
Telling.
So this is the county jail. They get billed in two segments. They get a base charge of $163 bimonthly and a per unit charge of 3260 for 284 units. So their current bimonthly bill is $9,400. Now, according to the ERU count from 2024, they actually have 156 ERUs. So by our proposed method, they would be paying something closer to 36 or 30, or almost $37,000 bimonthly, annual total of 220,000. So very striking about the, this particular one is that, uh, they, they actually make up 15% of the city's, uh, non residential ERUs. And yet they only pay 3.5% of the, uh, the non residential costs. So if you look at that from even just focusing on the treatment perspective, which is directly billed one to one on the SKWRF ERUs, you can see that they're underpaying. And so this customer would have, would see a large increase in their bill.
And I, and I have shared this slide with county commissioners and the, the sheriff. And, uh, while they weren't excited about it, they do understand. I mean, this is our citizens subsidizing that jail where the dead days are going to go up, the cost to operate that jail, but that needs to be divided by all the cities in the county and not just the city of Port Orchard.
Right.
Okay, so I've shown you some bills that go down, I've shown you some bills that go up. Here's a bill that stays mostly the same. This is a small restaurant. One currently, they get billed for one unit at $489 bimonthly, 20, 2900 annually. They have two ERUs, so they would be billed, uh, a bimonthly bill of $469 or 2200 annually. So their bill actually goes down by only 19 bucks, so not a, not a big deal for this particular customer.
How many seats are in a small restaurant?
I don't remember. I should have noted that, I'm sorry.
Under 150.
Is there a medium sized restaurant in this plan?
Not in, not in this slide deck, there isn't.
So we have a discrepancy from one, okay.
Yeah, good. High and low, from one to 140.
Well, from 2100 bucks to 15,000 bucks, so.
All right. And then this next slide shows you the, uh, calculated ERU method with the proposed increases. Now, once again, this top table would be your current method, which is what we call across the board. This is not assuming any rate changes, three and a half percents per year. You can see how the residential rate per year you goes from 163 bimonthly up to 194 bimonthly. We didn't print the other 21 rate classes. The second table shows you the rate design method. And under this method, I'd like to draw your attention to the residential rate per year you, that middle, uh, row. We are still increasing revenue by three and a half percent, because that is the revenue requirement. However, because of the rebalancing between the two classes, we actually go down for residential to 151, 58 in that first year. And then we slowly climb back up to $173 and 94 cents by 2030. Non residential, um, gets that, that new rate of about $235, uh, per year you, regardless of any, uh, particular rate class. So, um, this next slide gives you a rate survey for some comparable jurisdictions. As you can see, this doesn't happen very often for me, but, um, the proposed method is actually lower than the, uh, current method for the single family customers. We assumed 10 CCF for a bimonthly period for these particular, uh, comparisons. Um, I was asked also, uh, how these other jurisdictions do their billing. I will say that most of them do something called a, uh, you know, it's like a base plus a volume rate. That would be hard to do in Port Orchard, because not all of the, uh, water data is collected. Because Port Orchard doesn't have, run all of the water utility for the entire customer base, for the sewer customers, they're kind of disconnected. And so, um, that's why we proposed this, this method, not a base plus commodity method, but we do this counting once every year anyway. And so we wanted to make advantage of the fact that you're already counting ERUs once a year and you don't need to try and scrounge up water data from these other utilities, um, on a bimonthly basis. So, um, this last slide just basically summarized is everything we just talked about. We need, we see that revenue, revenue needs to increase by about three and a half percent per year through 2030. And then the council can also decide if they'd like to continue with the existing rate structure or move to this more simplified and we would argue more equitable ERU structure. And that's it for the prepared material, but Togi and I will answer any questions.
Questions or knee jerk reactions? Councilor Shan, go ahead.
Question, you, you know, a lot of interesting trivia. So on, um, slide 30, when you're talking about the bimonthly of the competing cities, do you happen to know, do they all bill my monthly or do any of them bill monthly?
There's a mix. That's, I don't remember for each individual one, but there is a mix between bimonthly and monthly.
Okay.
Councilor Deener?
I just have a question on, on slide 11. That's the breakdown of the capital and business program costs. And it shows the 583,000 as a static annual preservation cost throughout the lifespan of the CIP. Why is it not prorated to the wildly different costs you see in, in the total row?
Yeah, great question. So, uh, this slide shows unescalated costs. However, when we do our rate modeling, we don't leave it unescalated. We escalate it to year of construction using that, uh, three and a half percent inflation rate that Togi mentioned earlier.
Councilor Ross Pepe, go ahead.
Yeah, we had a robust discussion on this at the, um, utilities meeting today. Again, this, and I think the mayor will, will talk about this, that, you know, this is not something that we're taking a vote on tonight. This is, you know, more of an educational. Uh, one of the questions that I asked was that, uh, they took a 10 year look at, um, construction cost at three and a half. And I asked that, you know, would that be low, you know, if we looked at the last five years? And actually, correct me if I'm wrong, the, the, what was said was, uh, it was higher over the last five, five years, but they're starting to see a decrease in construction cost. So that the 3.5 is probably a real, you know, realistic for projection in the future. So I just wanted to bring that up, that they did look at the short term as well as the long term on construction costs. It, quite frankly, that affects most of our, uh, infrastructure budget. Thank you.
Other questions? We're going to touch this again.
We are, okay, yeah. I don't know that I have a ton of questions, so thank you for, for your information. It, it's a lot to digest and for somebody who wasn't on one of these committees to, 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 to be part of that, my first viewing of this, this evening. Uh, I, I know my initial gut reaction to seeing that is, man, we're putting more on the cost of, uh, on the shoulders of our business is the shoulder, a heavy burden elsewhere. It does get us closer to, uh, uh, true usage, right? And, and, and gets us closer that way. But the rest of our taxing system, uh, in the state and county, et cetera, is not set that way, right? More than 50% of our state budget is paid for, uh, by business. And here we're going to be adding more to that here in our city. So I want to be cognizant of that as I'm digesting this. But I know I'm going to have more questions, because even this last slide, continuing with the existing rate structure or moving to this new one, but I, as I was understanding, we are going to still keep the rate classes in both.
I don't believe so.
So the, the.
A step away from this complex mess.
But he still had different rate classes in his presentation, so.
Sample bills that I showed you was, we're looking at individual customers. Okay, they would all be billed at that 235 per year you.
Okay.
Under the new method.
Based, based on ERU.
Okay.
Yes.
And then the only other thing I know, we talked about, uh, something that somehow made this harder or not harder, um, about the number of washing machines or number of chairs capacities in a restaurant, uh, which I believe is all information we require, uh, with their permitting process. So I, I think, I, I don't see the burden there. I guess I, I'm, I'm confused on that.
We, we, we go out in the spec and, and, uh, we, we quite frequently will see your, your professional office building, we'll see, you know, a law office, um, and it was an example or an engineering office. They might have a toilet, uh, you know, a sink and then a sink to, in their kitchen to make coffee. We'll, I've seen examples where they're ripping the sinks out, because they're paying, uh, a fixture, we've charged them by the fixture in their, in their office building. And so they'll remove fixtures to pay less.
And they have that here in this?
That's, that's, yeah, we're charging by the fixture and versus charging by, I know, you know, an office building might have three toilets in it, but it was just built that way. And they're paying more, even though one person might be working in that office. Now, that's probably not a real example, but where, what was proposing is stepping away from this, where we're counting fixtures, um, you know, toilet, sinks, uh, that types of things in a business.
Making it flow based.
So then are we replacing that with the number of employees?
Well, the number of employees would increase the flow. So we're, so we're basing it, so we're counting.
So now we're going to need to additionally collect, so how many employees that business has?
No, we do not, because we're going to, we measure their water usage in the winter month and to, to gain what their average is. And that's, and that, that's how, and then we're going to apply that to this factor, because that's the water, just, if you, you run the tap, it goes down the drain. And because we took your irrigation out of the mix, because we measured it in the wintertime. So if you've got more people there and you're flushing the toilet more, the flows are larger and we're measuring that. So we're measuring it by your water usage to determine what your sewer flow is.
Dividing it by 180 GPD.
Let me do that every year.
And we do that every, that was.
That's what we'll do every year. It is that, I believe, correct, Noah?
Yeah, yeah, that's correct. So the mayor is correct. So the staff had our, uh, tasked FCS group with simplifying, because it is administratively burdensome. Mayor gave a, a good example, and this does happen where people remodel their office and they want us then to send out VCD and public works to inspect their, their newly remodeled office. And that's three now departments going out to figure out what could have possibly changed here, extra counting fixture counts going back in history, figuring what was originally there. So it is an administrative burden to, to administer the structure as is. As you, if you read it over, you, you'll kind of get the flavor of why that is, could be, uh, problematic. But it's really going to a simple model of a flat fee per ERU. And we measure that each year, uh, and, because that's what we now have to pay the treatment facility plant. We have to pay them by the number of ERUs that are served. So we do that work now for our contract and then we are charged that. What's different now is that we do that, but not all of the ERUs that we pay for are being compensated for it. The county was a prime example of that, where, do you still have that slide? How many ERUs are represented, the county jail?
15% of the flow, but only three and a half percent of the revenue.
So let me ask you this. We have a council member attending, uh, from his home in Arizona, right? How do we account for, uh, our many snowbirds, right? I, uh, we, we lose a lot of folks in our rotary group, uh, e, e, each, uh, wintertime as well. So they're going to be.
They're, they're, so they're going to be charged one ERU residences or one ERU.
Okay.
Flat.
Just flat. We don't, we don't, we don't have their.
We're not going to be checking their usage.
It's, it's very rare that a residential unit will tip over to be a two ERU. We do check it, but I, I can't think of a, a time where that occurred. I can't think of a, actually, that's not true. I'll tell you the time it occurred and it was due to a leak. They had a large leak and so lots of water. So it actually tipped them to a higher ERU category. And then when we sent out the bill, they said, hey, why are we being charged so much more in sewer? Uh, we're just a single residence. And we looked at the information, they said, well, was there a leak? A significant leak that would have tipped you over? And there was. And so then we were able to correct the bill and work with the customer on that. But that would be an example of where the, the actual measuring of the, the water consumption tipped you over into a new ERU, but it's very rare.
And how are you handling folks whose water usage is higher in the winter months than in the summer months?
I don't, one, no, I, I don't know that.
Uh, I would think a school would have a lower water usage in the summer months than in the winter months.
But they're watering. But they're, they're, they're vacant, but.
But now they have thousands of less people in a building.
Yeah. We're currently, we're currently, we're currently charging.
At the high school.
When the school's vacant also.
I'm just curious on how it works. If we're trying to make it more equitable, I want to make sure it's equitable for all.
So single family is defined as one ERU.
Well, yeah, so I heard that. So now I'm asking about this, like, say a school, for instance, is probably not going to have as much water usage in the summer than in the winter.
Right. And, and that was the example that we found, right? They actually only amounted to one ERU and that could be why.
Yeah. Okay.
Unless they water their lungs.
But to, to, I want to go back to, so we're going to, we, the proposal, we go from this, you know, 10 page rate structure to a single page, one flat fee for single family residents, one flat fee per ERU for non residential.
I, I'm all for efficiency and simplicity. Uh, I also, if we're going to say it in the name of equitability, uh, equity, sorry, I don't know how that came out of my mouth, uh, that, that I'd make sure to poke all the holes to.
Yeah.
Any last questions? So share, share your, you know, your comments and questions, Noah. And we, we want to get you as much into, I mean, what's, what's our, when, when we, when are we touching this again?
Yes, and that's why we're just talking about this. We were hoping to time this, excuse me, with the sewer plan adoption. But I would say late summer to early fall, uh, because this wouldn't be implemented till 2026 and we need some upfront time to change the code, change our systems. So late summer, July, August, uh, we'll bring this back. Um, and we can bring that to the finance committee, utility committee, if you guys want to talk about further, have further questions.
So we don't have much for meetings in August, so. Yeah, you know, can we touch this again as a discussion item, maybe in early September? And then potential action late, you know, end of September, October?
We, we can bring this back with the general sewer plan and do a work study session. And so we can discuss this further once we see the general sewer plan too.
Okay. Yep, that's perfect.
Sound like a fair plan. Probably we get a chance to touch this again.
Thank you very much. Very.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
I like the idea, bringing it down to ERU simplifying. I really like that.
Maybe put it on that government page too, so the community can come in.
Okay, we are to our next, uh, discussion item or no, excuse me, presentation. Uh, we have our employee, uh, and inclusion commission annual report to the city council. So Ms. Lund, this is you.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. In 2003, the Employee Inclusion Commission was formed. The resolution you adopted asked for an annual report, so we are ready tonight to present that report. I have some members of the inclusion commission here and we're each going to talk for a little bit. And we're going to start with Beth Spalding, so I will let her get started.
Good evening, council members. It's my pleasure to begin the City of Port Orchard's Inclusion Commission annual update. So in this presentation, we'll be addressing a few different areas. I will begin by giving some background on the history. I'll then turn it over to Heather Humphrey, who will explain what our goals are. Debbie Lund will then give an overview of 2024 and Alan E. Washito will paint a picture of our plans for the remainder of 2025. So for those of you who haven't met me previously, my name is Beth Spalding. I'm the human resources analyst at City of Port Orchard. A few years ago, I did a body of research, which I presented to city council and that experience resulted in the creation of the inclusion commission. I currently participate on inclusion commission as a member of the community. I currently participate on inclusion commission as a member of the community. So some council members may remember that presentation or perhaps you viewed a video of it from council meeting archives. But for those of you who are unfamiliar with it, as well as to give everyone present a bit of a refresher, I'd like to provide some background to explain why this is something we care about and what prompted us to make this a priority. So the term inclusion has been a buzzword over the last few years. So you may have a reaction to hearing that term. You may have a gut response, either positive or negative, an idea of how you interpret that word. Because it has been so overused, I want to take a moment to thoroughly explain what I mean by it and make sure we're all talking about the same thing. So inclusion is something that permeates the culture and expectations at a workplace. If an employee feels included at work, they feel welcome, valued, comfortable, important, that they belong. A culture of inclusion is not something that happens naturally. It needs to be fostered and cultivated by leadership. You can probably think of a time when you felt comfortable and valued with a group of people, maybe your family or close friends. You can also probably remember a time when you felt that you were on the outside of a group, maybe trying to navigate a new language in a foreign country, or maybe even your first day on city council as you were thrust into new expectations and regulations. As those varying experiences come to mind, perhaps you can remember the stark differences and how you felt in those different situations. Which of those environments do you think you would be able to work more effectively in? An environment where you feel welcome and important or an environment where you feel on guard and wary? I expect that you believe you would work more effectively in an environment where you belong and are valued rather than the opposite. This is the heart of what workplace inclusion is. You see this reflected in the mission of the inclusion commission to foster a workplace culture of inclusion at the City of Port Orchard through education, promotions and activities. This mission has been shouldered by a volunteer group of employees who are passionate about this purpose. It was formed in twenty twenty-three by city council resolution. So beyond my anecdotal portrayal of why inclusion is important, what does the research say? Why is this such an important topic that it is worth employees with full plates dedicating their time toward? Here are just a few. Reduced risk of lawsuits. You're likely very familiar with employee anti-harassment and anti-discrimination trainings, which are often provided with an eye toward reducing the risk of discrimination or harassment lawsuits. Inclusion goes beyond the avoidance of discrimination and harassment to the addition of feeling welcome at work as a whole person, exactly who you are. It logically follows that when this is the culture, attitude and focus of a workplace, there will be a reduced risk of harassment or discrimination which arise from a lack of respect or understanding of our differences. Improve reputation. Much of my work at City of Port Orchard is in recruitment. And I can tell you that in our post-pandemic world, prospective employees are being thoughtful about where they choose to come to work. I hear job candidates ask questions and interviews about the workplace culture of the city. And I encourage hiring managers to consider, consider what a job candidate may add to the workplace culture of the city if hired. To continue to employ high-quality candidates, the city needs to earn and maintain a reputation as an employer of choice. Furthermore, as you know, the citizens of Port Orchard are watching the city employees and its council members at all times. What do our decisions say about our priorities? Are we as a city communicating what we intend? Do we have room to grow in how we are currently perceived versus how we wish to be perceived? Improve productivity and innovation. As a workplace culture of inclusivity is fostered and City of Port Orchard's reputation as such grows, we will find ourselves attracting high-quality employees from a wide variety of backgrounds. Gathering employees with different perspectives and specialties together means that our workplace will increase in diversity, which is linked to several positive outcomes, including increases in productivity and increases in innovation. This supports the city's goals and aims as we strive to better serve the citizens of Port Orchard. Increase employee retention and support employee mental health. Feeling welcomed and valued at work can reduce stress on your employees, improve mental health, promote employee engagement and increase longevity at the city. Keeping employees working, healthy and happy also means lower costs. Fewer resources go to recruitment and onboarding new employees. We help keep healthcare costs down and we get higher quality work products. So let's say you now understand what inclusion is and the positive impacts it can have, as well as how it can benefit the city. But even after defined, inclusion is a vague term. How do we know if we're an inclusive workplace? How do we become more inclusive? How can we identify areas we have to grow and how do we get there? These are really big and important questions and I wish I could say this is a clear, one-size-fits-all roadmap with a set number of simple steps we can chuck off a list. But workplace culture is very complex and while there are a multitude of resources and experts available, it takes work to sift through and evaluate which ones are effective as well as a good choice for the city. Inclusion commission members are not experts, but we believe the work is important. And so we as employees have taken the time to delve into some of these resources and develop a plan and strategy for moving forward. To explain those in more detail, I'm going to turn this presentation over to a few of my fellow inclusion commission members, starting with Heather Humphrey.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, chief directors and staff. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you this evening. My name is Heather Humphrey and I'm a police services specialist who had had the privilege of serving as the chair for the inclusion commission last year. And I still continue to participate this year. Um, to go over our goals, I'd briefly like to share with you our goals that we've established to guide our work in fostering a more inclusive and equitable environment for city employees. Goal number one is to establish a culture of belonging where employees are feeling welcomed and supported. This is the foundation of our work. We believe that when individuals feel that they are true, that they truly belong, they are more engaged, productive and committed to public service. Goal number two, challenge as city managers, directors and leaders to move from awareness to competency in manners of diversity, equity and inclusion. It is not enough to simply understand these concepts. Our leaders must be equipped to integrate inclusion principles in their decision-making and daily operations. Goal number three, to increase the city knowledge about diversity, equity and inclusion. This means ongoing education and training opportunities that are meaningful, accessible and applicable to the realities of the workforce. Goal number four, focuses on understanding and advocating for the diverse needs of our employees. Every employee brings a unique background and perspective and it is essential that we recognize those differences to ensure that everyone has the support that they need to succeed. These goals are not only just aspirational, they're intentionable, actionable and measurable. And we, they are designed to create real and lasting change within our organization. We're proud of the progress that we've made so far and continue to, oh, excuse me, continue to, uh, committed to continuing this important work with you. Thank you for your time. And now I'd like to introduce Debbie Lund, our human resources director, who will highlight the past accomplishments of our group.
Good evening again. Thank you, Heather. Uh, I want to cover some of the things that the commission worked on in twenty twenty-four. In addition to being your human resources director, according to the resolution, I am the coordinator for the Employee Inclusion Commission. So in twenty twenty-four, we asked for volunteer employees to, uh, come and meet with us and join us in these efforts. We've had monthly meetings. We have a core group of six to eight employees who take time out of their busy schedules to join us each month for those meetings. We have four to six more employees that join us as they can, as schedules and workloads allow. We have had interest from all departments, um, on the commission or at least to be kind of on the mailing list to receive those updates. In accordance with the goals for education, the commission needed to educate ourselves. Right? The process here is a journey. Uh, we have a lot to learn and we're still learning. We attended some webinars together. We've done lots of literature review. We've had numerous conversations about unconscious bias and women's history and some of these topics, you'll see why we chose them when I get into our, uh, future slide. I'm going to hold the punchline here. On the next slide, Janine, if you would, we've also expanded those learning opportunities to all employees. Uh, we want to share with them information about various things that they might not have been aware of. Rosa Parks Day, World Autism Day, mental health awareness, Pride Day, it's Pride Month, by the way, last June. Suicide Prevention Month, uh, disabilities and various religious holidays. There's a very long list. We can go out there and look. We've started training with the management team on unconscious bias again and just in general on promoting workplace belonging. We also held kind of a social event, a cultural foods event and invited employees to cook and bring in food for lunch, either from family traditions or heritage or whatever they chose to contribute for just a fun event. On the next slide, Janine, our biggest project for twenty twenty-four though was our survey. First and foremost, I want to thank the council for allowing us to budget for that employee survey. We went out with an RFP and chose a consultant, um, out of the East Coast, actually. Evolve Market Research was the consultant. They produced a survey with our input in May of twenty twenty-four. We surveyed then a hundred and three city employees. And for anybody who's worked on a survey, you, you know, you're jumping and celebrating if you get maybe thirty percent response rate. We had an amazing eight, four and a half percent response rate. So, um, just a tremendous response from our city employees, which we're very thankful for. So what did the survey tell us? Nearly ninety-one percent rated their relationship with their colleagues and supervisors as very good or excellent, which was great news. Eighty-four percent satisfaction with the job. Eighty-one percent value. Sixty-five percent felt as though they belonged. Sixty-one percent indicated a high level of inclusion in the workplace. So awesome, great numbers there. And more people said they would recommend for this, working for the city than those that they would not. But of course, there was some additional news, some takeaways you're finding. Don't be all around on her. I will, I will go to, shoot to my notes. There were opportunities for us that we learned in that survey as well. The interesting part, one of the many interesting parts is statistically, our survey results did not vary based on gender, religion, disability, ethnicity. Our survey results vary in a much department here at the city you worked in. So that was a key takeaway for the commission. Communication across the departments, interdepartmental, uh, was rated lower than communication within that employee's own department. And survey results, uh, felt, employees felt like they lacked common cohesive business. You have your guiding principles that are posted there. Uh, perhaps the employees are telling us they would like something similar. Employees with a disability, and we had about eighteen percent of our city of self-report as having a disability. They felt less emotionally supported or satisfied, um, and or sense of belonging here at the city. So that's something for us to keep our eye on as well. And thirty percent of employees did not feel as though they could express their true feelings at work. And that's a term called psychological safety that we're also taking a look at. Additionally, and another big takeaway for the commission, stress is a concern. About over a third of the employees reported feeling very high, high or very high levels of stress, most often tied to workload. We're, we're a little busy around here. Stress has led to burnout. Forty-four percent witnessed or experienced burnout in employees that have considered going to work elsewhere, that forty percent. That was an amazing loss for the city. Only fifty-six percent of employees feel emotionally supported at work. Less than half feel comfortable discussing their mental health with their supervisor or with human resources. As female employees are more stressed and feel less valued than the male counterparts. You saw earlier, we spent some time at the commission on women's history and that was a primary driver for that. So what do we do with these results? We shared them with all employees, right? You take this survey, you never hear about those results. We did not want to be that kind of survey. We shared this information with all employees. The inclusion commission provided management, human resources and our wellness committee a list of suggestions as a basis that came out of this survey. Department directors were dig, asked to dig into their own department results and create a related goal for themselves in their department for twenty twenty-five. We requested, and again, thank you for your approval and authorization to repeat this survey in twenty twenty-six. We want to know if we've moved this needle at all. And the survey results were used to guide our work plan for twenty twenty-five. And at this point, I will turn things over to our twenty twenty-five chair, Deputy Chief, Alan E. Washington.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Pro-Tam, council members, city staff and union members. For those of you unfamiliar, my name is Alan Washington. I'm the deputy chief at the police department here and have been gratefully selected to be the twenty twenty-five chair for the inclusion commission. So so the inclusion commission, um, as my colleagues have already spoken about, we've covered the inception of the inclusion commission, covered some of the goals and achievements that have been worked towards over the past year or so. And I'll be focused on, uh, where we're going, where we hope to go. And in moving forward, uh, in efforts to achieve the goals that we've identified, there were two real themes that we identified, um, improving communication and fostering psychological safety, of which I'll speak to. And we've identified also the sustainability as it's important for any of these types of efforts or initiatives to continue. So starting with communication, communicate, communicate, communicate. So, um, as mentioned, uh, by my colleagues, several key areas of improvement, uh, were identified by the survey, uh, focused on communication and psychological safety. Uh, the inclusion commission acts as a hub and is positioned well to facilitate and institute meaningful change within the organization and our organizational culture. It provides a forum to share and identify communication goals or communication gaps and promote connection. The inclusion commission will strive to improve cross-departmental communication and improve clarity around the city's overarching mission, vision and values within the context of our unique employee culture. We're not alone. These are challenges that are facing all organizations across the nation. A significant portion of our employees indicated high levels of stress tied to workload, with many reporting burnout, uh, perceived low emotional support and a discomfort in discussing mental health and disability challenges they may be facing. But again, we are not alone and studies have historically shown that the percentages with which the survey has indicated for us, they're consistent across all types of work environments and organizations. So closing the gap, the survey revealed several areas of improvement. Um, and again, to reiterate, employees with disabilities and female staff reported feeling less valued and less emotionally supported and increased levels of stress. The inclusion commission has already initiated efforts to help improve in these key areas. Um, we will be releasing a new or inaugural employee newsletter to update and keep city staff informed on our progress and identified needs and also provide open lines of communication with them. We've had recognition events and we continue to plan other events to hopefully foster a more communicative, uh, environment. One of those is, I don't know if you may have seen the little green ducks, uh, floating around, but department heads were asked, we provided them with the little green duck. We encourage department heads to engage and supervisors to engage in conversations with their staff in, on issues not related necessarily to work, to focus on them as person, human beings and individuals to help hopefully bridge that gap. So am I safe? So psychological safety is kind of a buzzword, and I wanted to be able to explain just so that we're all pulling from the same context. So psychological safety is a term that was coined by Harvard Professor Dr. Amy Edmondson in the 90s. And it essentially is psychological safety is feeling safe to take interpersonal risks, speak up, disagree openly, and surface concerns without fear of negative repercussions. And so a litmus test for any individual, and you can ask yourself these questions yourself as to whether or not you are experiencing either good psychological safety or potentially a lack of. If you ask yourself, if you make a mistake on a team, will it be held against you? Are you concerned about bringing up problems and tough issues because you fear ridicule? Are members of your team ostracized for being, for being or thinking differently? Is it difficult to ask other members on your team for help? If you answered yes to these questions, you may be in an environment that is on the lower end of offering psychological safety. So why do we encourage psychological safety? So there have been numerous studies conducted over the years that have identified psychological safety as a number one common denominator for highly effective teams. It results in a reduction in burnout, increased retention rate, and a reduction in stress. And as you've heard my colleagues mention before, those were items that were expressed during our survey with our personnel. So how will we achieve this? Human behavior doesn't change due to a single training program or initiative. Behavior change succeeds when there's a clear goal and a comprehensive strategy for achieving it. Skill development centered around capabilities that not only support the larger goal, but also apply to people's day-to-day work is essential. So the Inclusion Commission is actively working to help identify and build mechanisms to support this development and day-to-day skills within our employees and leadership staff. So again, one of the conversational pieces, the green ducky, not only encourages conversation, but it's also an effective tool in hopefully creating a sense of psychological safety as well. We've also identified additional training on psychological safety through our EAP program that will be offered to all employees organization-wide. Finally, to close, I'll talk a little bit about sustainability. So the Inclusion Commission identifies sustainability as a critical goal. We are not virtue signaling, but effectuating lasting change for the organization. And you may have heard this phrase before, culture eats policy for breakfast. Cultural transformation requires constant, consistent embedded practices, not one-off events. The Inclusion Commission is helping to shape these through a strategic, employee-centered, and data-informed approach. As you've already heard, we've initiated a survey to identify current and future goals and hope to execute a follow-up survey in the near future to help identify new areas for improvement and further crystallize our mission. How will we make it stick? The Inclusion Commission will strive to make informed, data-driven decisions, IDing or identifying opportunities to improve awareness and increase our overall competency in this area, in these areas, I should say. In summary, the Inclusion Commission is not. I'm sorry. In summary, the Inclusion Commission is working to actively shape the city's evolving internal structure. Our hope is to act as a connector, advocate, and guide, leveraging both employee input and leadership engagement to build a more communicative, psychologically safe, and inclusive organization. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I just want to thank the commission for the work you're doing to improve the culture of our city. I value the work you guys are doing. It, we want to make sure that we have a welcoming workplace. And I, and I know that, that work you're doing is, is, is working towards that. So thank you for your work you're doing. Questions from the council, Councilmember Deener?
I just like the second what the mayor had to say. I think it's pretty impressive. We've asked for a presentation to DCD up at the county a long, long time ago, and I thought that was great. I love to see the progress that's been made since then. One of the, a couple of the other slides actually meant, mentioned goals and strategies. And it was followed by a slide that, that measured, you know, measurable, measurable outcomes. And I'm just curious, what have, what have you shown, what have you measured so far? Or is this really kind of the baseline that we're setting this survey today?
Yeah, that May 2024 survey was the baseline. And we won't measure per se anything again until we resurvey, which we hope to do in January of 26. It's not going to necessarily be apples to apples, right? We have a lot of new employees. We surveyed when City Hall was in disarray from construction, when we were doing a big change in organization out at the shop. But you, you know, you need something. So very much looking forward to seeing what those results say.
Okay, so are we, I think.
Go ahead, John.
Yeah, thank you for the presentation. A lot of great information unpacked there. Has, I, I don't remember seeing it. Maybe I missed it. Was that survey shared with council?
Very good question. We might not have done that. If council is interested in seeing that, we'd be happy to.
For the rest of them, I know I would. So I, I would love to, to, to see that result because it, it felt based off of the presentation that was much more of an employee satisfaction survey, more so than an inclusion survey. And so I just, I have tons of experience and just would love to, to see some of the nuanced details in that. And then two, I just want to bring up that. I hope it's a priority. I know that there's some folks that come and go. I would hope that it was made clear to their manager that this is something that we make time for. That just seemed like a, for the number of employees we have for the city, we should be able to get people to a meeting of that nature if we're going to make that super important. And then when we talk about these things in my past, right? You have four, what I think, great, were they mission goals or just goals? Do we in the future see strategies and then how we're measuring each one of those moving forward? I just want to make sure that if we're investing in this, we're, we're getting everything that we can out of it.
Yeah, and we do have that document. Beth has done a great job in leading us in that effort with goals, strategies, objectives, tasks, I think is the structure. For, for me, we ended up spending so much meeting time in that detail. We were starting, I felt like we were starting to lose the bigger picture. So we kind of regrouped in January of this year and just simplified it. I mean, we all do this in our quote-unquote spare time, of which you saw the survey results, we have none. And so we, that's where, as Alan presented, we were just like, let's focus on communication. Let's focus on stress and psychological safety.
That's awesome. You know, I think when you allow these cross-collaborative opportunities, you find efficiencies and maybe we'll have more ability to do that. So thank you for the improvement at the city.
Councilmember Chang, go ahead.
The only thing I would add on to what John said, he stole most of my thunder, is I was impressed. The, the findings are actually very interesting. But I was also wondering if there was a free-form section of the survey. For example, when they're saying that communication across departments was ranked lower than inside a department, you would sort of expect that. So I was wondering what, what were the survey respondents expecting? And I was really encouraged that Alan said you guys are doing a newsletter. I mean, that sounds like the first solution. So I think it would be, I would be open to hearing more suggestions, what they'd like to see more of or hear more of. And I hope you invite council to the culture potlucks. That sounds like.
Yes, that's definitely.
There was a free, just so you know, there was a free form feature, but we, we were not privy to those responses. The consultants kept that data and summarized them, again, protecting employee confidentiality, right? Because this survey was 100% anonymous. The consultants knew who responded, we did not. So they did have some areas where they were. But you know, anecdotally, those at the table, right, are talking about it. Perfect example that came up at the last meeting was, we kind of all looked out the window and said, what is it we're building down there and what does it do, right? There's a number of staff that don't know. And so just things like that, right?
Do they want an Intranet of their own so they can communicate amongst themselves?
I'm not sure if that's come up. Director Crocker runs IT. I don't know if that has been a conversation.
We've talked about it, internet.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's one of those projects, but they've been on the list for a few years now.
Yeah.
Teams chat does that.
Yeah. And everything that we do in our world is a public record though, too.
Yes.
Councilmember Rose Pepe.
Thank you, Debbie, for leading this effort, but it's, I know it's a team effort. I would say a couple of things. One, 80-some percent return is huge. I mean, and it'll be interesting to see what happens with the second survey because people will feel whether they were included or not or heard. So that'll be awesome. I can honestly say from, as the city becomes transformational, Mayor, as we grow in, it's, it's the right time to do this. And I'll be very interested to see what cross-pollinization there is between departments. I know in a previous life, we had to have mechanics go out on the buses to schools because quite frankly, they didn't see what the end result of their work was. At the end of the day, all they knew is they fixed a bus. They didn't see that it picked up kids. And that, you know, and it sounds so simple, but it's not. And yet we have a department that is out at the.
Did the industrial park, we've got him across the street here, across the street there.
Yeah, it's, it's very awesome. So thank you, Beth, and Alan, this, I'm pretty, thank you very much. Appreciate your efforts. Thank you.
Councilmember Trinari, go ahead.
I'll just keep it brief. Thank you for the information and the presentation. And I look forward to, and I hope the rest of the council does, being on that newsletter list so that we can receive those as well.
Councilmember Pepe, go ahead.
Yeah, I just like the way you guys are all working together and communicating and trying to really, you know, make everyone feel valued. And that's what I really got out of this, that how you're working with each other.
Thank you.
Thank you, Debbie, and all of you. I appreciate you a great deal. All right, we're going to finally get to our business items. And so first is item A, adoption and ordinance approving the 2025 Comprehensive Plan Update. Mr. Bond, this is you.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and members of council. Before the city council tonight is an ordinance adopting the 2025 Comprehensive Plan Amendments. This ordinance has the recommendation of six out of six planning commissioners as considered at the June 3rd, 2025 Planning Commission meeting after closing a public hearing. The amendments recommended for approval include a city and private individual-initiated amendment to the capital facilities element to fix a transposition error on cost estimates for two projects, a city-initiated amendment to the transportation improvement program, a private individual-initiated amendment to the comprehensive plan to change a land use designation on properties near Old Clifton Road from industrial to commercial with a zoning map amendment from light industrial to residential three. The map amendment was the only proposed amendment for which the city received public testimony. Today, Councilmember Chang emailed us asking about this testimony, and we did email out the letters that the Planning Commission had received. The, the public comments generally were concerned with the impacts of development, not necessarily stating unequivocally whether they wanted industrial or residential. And so we, we tried to explain that the development impacts get applied, get evaluated at the time of development, not at the time that we're just considering applying the land use designation. So I, I did want to also note that the Planning Commission started this meeting at its May 6th meeting. It's May 6th Planning Commission meeting. They started the hearing, that is. And then because of the amount of testimony received, they chose to keep the record open so that people could submit written comments after the fact and also come back and testify again at the June meeting before they closed the hearing. So the, there were a few other amendments on the 2025 docket. These were withdrawn prior to consideration before the Planning Commission, and staff recommends approval of an ordinance adopting the 2025 Comprehensive Plan Amendments as presented.
Councilmember Trinari.
Yeah, Mayor, I move to approve the 2025 Comprehensive Plan Amendments as recommended by the Planning Commission.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Trinari, a second by Councilmember Morrissey. Questions to Mr. Bond? Is there annual process? Go ahead.
I just have a comment. I want to thank Nick and Jim for sending out the commentary. In reading the report, I was a little concerned that there were so many people showing up at the Planning Commission meetings, and I just wanted to get a flavor for what their testimony was. The three documents that you sent, actually, I think, it reassured me that their issues are being answered. There was one, I guess, from Mr. Palmer that helped address a lot of the issues that came up. And I, so I felt, I feel comfortable with the comprehensive plans as presented.
Other comments, questions? All right, you'll be voting on the adoption of an ordinance approving the 2025 Comprehensive Plan Update. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Hearing none, the ordinance is approved. We're to item B, adoption of an ordinance approving the updated commute trip reduction plan. Mr. Bond, this is you.
Yes, the city council is asked to approve an ordinance that adopts the City of Port Orchard's updated commute trip reduction plan. The CTR plan has been revised and prepared by Kitsap Transit in accordance with the requirements of the Washington Clean Air Act codified in RCW 7094-521 through 7094-551. Adoption of this ordinance will replace the existing plan adopted in 2008 and ensure that the city remains in compliance with the current state law and regional transportation goals. The City of Port Orchard originally adopted a CTR plan in 1999 through ordinance 1760. In 2008, the city updated the plan through ordinance number 14-08, which amended Port Orchard Municipal Code Section 10.86.030 and incorporated the plan as an attachment A. As a participant in the 1997 interlocal agreement with Kitsap Transit and other jurisdictions within Kitsap County, the city relies on Kitsap Transit to update and coordinate the CTR plans on behalf of all partner jurisdictions. Kitsap Transit has now completed an update to the CTR plan for 2025 to reflect current commute conditions, employer practices, and strategies for trip reduction. The proposed ordinance formally adopts this updated CTR plan to replace the existing Attachment A with the 2025 version. The updated plan outlines the city's responsibilities and strategies for reducing single occupancy vehicle commutes as an employer and supports multimodal travel, telework, and flexible scheduling. The plan also ensures that the city remains eligible for state assistance and fulfills regional obligations under the Growth Management Act and Clean Air Act mandates. Staff recommendation is to adopt an ordinance to approve the updated commute reduction plan as prepared by Kitsap Transit and maintain compliance with state law.
Councilmember Morrissey.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt an ordinance adopting the commute trip reduction plan as presented.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Morrissey, a second by Councilmember Deener. Have any questions for Mr. Bond? I know we've been issuing transit passes to some folks as part of this program because we have parking problem, if you haven't heard. And we're trying to get fewer, fewer employees to bring their cars to work. So we've been, been a big, a big effort associated with that initiative.
So, yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I was just actually in a conversation with another council member earlier because this is more than just what Ms. Lund talked with us last month about, correct, Mr. Bond? That was city-specific when Ms. Lund came and talked about this. And this is a plan more broadly for the entire city.
Correct. And this is, this is pursuant to the interlocal agreement, and it's to comply with the state mandate.
Okay. And the substantial changes to the agreement, were there anything?
I, I really couldn't speak to the changes in great detail. You know, we weren't the author of this. It was Kitsap Transit who prepared it. And sorry, I, I don't have a summary of that at my fingertips.
Who from the city would have input in this four-year plan that we're about to adopt on behalf of the city?
I'm not sure if Ms. Lund had any input on this, but I know that Jim Fisk worked with Kitsap Transit as part of this to, to basically review and comply, you know, make sure that this is complying with all of our, our state mandates.
As I think I mentioned last time here, we took the teacher production as a city as an employer, HR handle as a jurisdiction, as well as a planner function. I believe substantial updates were to the goals. As I recall, the state has increasingly levels of more and more people off the road as the year goes by.
Other questions?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry, go ahead, Eric.
Yeah. So this was approved by the Kitsap Transit Board, is that correct?
This is not, Kitsap Transit Board has not, I don't believe. We did, it's nothing that comes to recent memory. I think this is a, they're, they're the kind of the governing agent of this in a, in its state law, isn't it?
Yeah, it's the Washington Clean Air Act, and then there's also regional policies that this helps implement. But yeah, it's, it's a state law that requires that this be done. I don't know what involvement the board has, but I know that this is, this is prepared for all of the jurisdictions in Kitsap County in coordination with them. But Kitsap Transit is the one who actually puts the plan together.
Correct, so I was kind of confused because John asked who basically approved it from Kitsap County or from Kitsap Transit? And we have multiple board members sitting here tonight on the Transit Board. So I thought that that was approved by the mayor and councilman, councilmember Rose Pepe, but maybe not.
It's nothing we've seen recently that comes to mind. And I know that they're the ones, the, the expertise in this and are drafting these documents on behalf of the, you know, the other agencies that participate in this. I think we all have to participate in it by, by state law and the cleaning, what is it, Clean Air Act.
So this is just formality?
Yeah, yeah, complying with state law.
Yeah, yeah.
Councilmember Chang.
Yeah, another formality is this plan involves other agencies such as WashDOT. And WashDOT is contributing funds. I have nothing to do with that. I don't benefit from it, but I will recuse myself if anyone feels I need to.
I wish Mr. Councilmember Chang to recuse himself from voting on this.
Not so lucky.
Not so lucky.
Yeah, no, I mean, WashDOT puts the most money into it, right, in this plan?
All right, you'll be voting on an ordinance approving the updated commute trip reduction plan. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Right, the updated plan has been approved. We're to our last business item, which is also Mr. Bond. Approval of a memorandum of agreement between the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, the State Historic Preservation Office, Recreation and Conservation Office, Washington Trust for Historic Preservation, and the City of Port Orchard for the city's Community Event Center Waterfront Plaza Project. Mr. Bond.
Yes, the city council is asked to adopt an MOA related to the Community Event Center project and the associated waterfront plaza and restoration project. The city is required to obtain permits from the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers in order to construct the in-water portions of the project, including a new seawall over water structure and restoration project. The city has applied for these permits as part of its completing its Section 6 review under the National Historic Preservation Act. This review is required because the existing Kitsap Bank Building is now more than 50 years old. Adoption of the proposed MOA allows for the U.S. Army Corps to sign off on the permit under the Section 6 Cultural Resources Review. In the MOA, the city agrees to the following actions. The city will ensure that archaeological monitoring, will ensure archaeological monitoring, and that an inadvertent discovery plan for the project is followed. And this is already a condition of approval under our SEPA decision, which was issued in 2019 for the project. The city will provide educational signage, including four interpretive panels along the waterfront. Three of these are already required because we said we would do that as part of our RCO grant that we applied for and received a half a million dollars towards the project to complete. The city will provide an interpretive panel inside the community event center, highlighting the past use of the site as the Kitsap Bank Building, and will highlight how the bank materials have been reused in the new building. We're planning on using the timbers from the old building on the stair treads, and so we want to highlight the adaptive reuse. And so it's really the cost of designing and installing a sign inside the building. The city will then share documentation of all expenditures related to the interpretive panels for use as match for the Washington Trust for Historic Preservation by providing us our receipts. They're able to, to report on that and show that is how the, the program is being implemented. And then finally, we have an obligation to provide annual updates to all of the parties until the project is completed. So all in all, the, it's not a terribly costly agreement. It's, it's one additional exterior sign, one additional interior sign, and the staff recommendation is approval of the MOA for the Community Event Center and Waterfront Plaza as presented.
Councilmember Chang.
I move to approve an memorandum of agreement between the City of Port Orchard, the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, the State Historic Preservation Office, Recreation Conservation Office, and Washington Trust for Historic Preservation as presented.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Chang and a second by Councilmember Fenton. So questions, so this is one of the conditions for us to get our permit from the Army Corps of Engineer, correct, Mr. Bond?
Yes, that is correct.
I am personally very encouraged by this, especially to be when it talks about the reuse of materials in the bank building. I think that's a really nice effort. I'd say about maybe 100, 200 years ago, they probably would have rolled the bank building somewhere else. We don't do that anymore, but it's at least nice that recycling materials from the existing building.
And it was already in our plan to do that. It's just we've got to call it out. Councilmember Morrissey.
Yes, Director Bond, this was part of the presentation we had at Finance Committee, yes?
Yes, it was mentioned in the committee.
Okay, so this is the $10,000 sign.
Well, it's, it's hiring, we have to have an interpretive specialist to help us prepare the content, which we would have had to design signs anyway, whether that's our landscape architect or the, the interpretive specialist. And then it is purchasing two signs in addition to the three that we already committed to in our grant agreement.
And the funding source, the people who are requiring this are the funders. So they're funding their own sign? I guess I want to make sure that I'm not authorizing general fund dollars for a $10,000 sign and that it's coming from somebody else's money.
Well, the, the sign is an eligible expense under the RCO grant.
It is eligible or ineligible?
It's eligible.
Okay.
It's also eligible under our Kitsap Public Facilities District money. So the sign that's in the building is part of the building design. So that can be, you know, we can use public facility district money to pay for that. And then park impact fees are a large portion of both projects in terms of our match. So that's going to go towards the project. And if there's, you know, we're going to bid this, we don't know what it's going to cost yet. And so how the council chooses to fund any remaining portion of the project is, is up to the city council. Hopefully, one of our representatives will come through with some money for us.
Okay. So, and then specifically which entity, because we're in an MOA with multiple entities here, is requiring as that as their piece with the interpreter?
It's the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, but they're required to consult with these other organizations. One of the organizations is RCO, who is funding the plaza grant. So, so they're, they're concurring with what the Corps of Engineers is asking for. And we, we had a series of collaborative meetings where they said, I think, you know, we want to highlight the traditional northwest maritime architecture of the existing bank building. And each person sort of said, this is what's important to my organization. And they came to an agreement that this would be a suitable way to, to proceed.
Okay.
Is it 10 grand for the design or 10,000 for the, to have someone build it, create it?
Well, the signs are, it's probably going to be 10 grand for hiring an interpretive specialist and the cost of two additional signs because these are not terribly complex or expensive signs. Until we go out to bid, I don't know what the actual sign cost is going to be. And we're waiting for a scope of work from an interpretive specialist to do the content, any illustrations, and the graphic design work. So we're, we're not expecting this to cost more than $10,000. Maybe, maybe it goes up to 12, but it's, it's in that neighborhood.
So we're a lot in you, a lot in money to, to start the project, but not to okay the actual contract to do it?
This, that's true. This is a requirement to get it. And at some point, we're going to need to approve a contract to do this work. You are absolutely correct.
All right, thank you.
And again, I'm, I'm going to vote for it. I just want clarity on which of those entities makes that requirement for the interpretive specialist.
Yeah, it's, it's coming from the U.S. Army Corps of Engineer under the authority of the National Historic Preservation Act.
Okay, so the Army Corps is my answer in the future. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Fenton.
Oh, when it says, I was just wondering, who are the parties? And maybe you, you said it with the engineer, but the city will provide an annual update to parties to the agreement until this project is completed.
All the parties that are listed in this agreement.
Okay, all those are the party.
Bottom of page 171.
Yes, okay.
All right, any further questions? You'll be voting on a memorandum of agreement with the Army Corps of Engineers and many other parties and the City of Port Orchard related to the community center and the waterfront plaza. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hearing none, the memorandum is approved. We've got a discussion item, and we're going to need to hustle because we've got about 20 minutes left in our time this evening. So Mr. Bond asked that we add a discussion item related to transportation impact fees. And the reason this got important is the consultant, the employee at the consultant, consulting firm is leaving as of Friday. So we want to be able to get this somewhat wrapped up if we can with the direction that you gave us the other night. So, Mr. Bond?
Yeah, so thank you, Mayor, and yes, I apologize for the late addition to the agenda, but I think this will save us a lot of time in the long run. If you'll recall, when we discussed this at our, I believe it was a work-study meeting, we talked about three alternatives that the consultant provided. There was an alternative A, G, and C that each had a different per-trip fee proposed between $7,000 and $10,000 per peak PM trip. Council requested, after some discussion, that we meet in the middle between the, the amounts and alternatives A and B. And in order to adjust the fee, we either need to add projects or take away projects. And so we, we, we worked, we've been working on that over the last week and a half. So alternative B is provided by the consultant, included all the projects from alternative A plus 12 additional projects. And the, the total cost to come from impact fees under the growth share was $60 million for alternative A and $77 million for alternative B. And so to meet in the middle, we, we essentially need to add about $8.3 million in, in total project cost to the alternative. So we put together a survey that we sent to each council member, asking you to rank these projects, the 12 projects that are the difference between A and B in order from highest priority to lowest priority. And there were seven projects that were sort of above the midway point between the two alternatives. All of these but one are generally located along Bay Street or in the downtown. And so it, it seemed that the, the downtown area, Bay Street from Mile Hill all the way through downtown and then back up Port Orchard Boulevard, all of those projects are included. But the design project for Sedgwick Road West, that's, that was ranked number six. That is to at least get a design and right-of-way plan for that, that stretch between Sydney in front of Lowe's over to Highway 16 where we have a lot of backups. So those projects are all, all come to $6.6 million. And so that's, that's below the midway point between alternative A and B in terms of, of picking projects. When you get to projects that were ranked eight through 12, project eight is the biggest project in that list. And so that would take us well over the midway point between alternative A and B if we were to add that. And these projects, you know, for the most part are not in downtown, are not in downtown Port Orchard, with the exception of a roundabout at the bottom of Port Orchard Boulevard. That one didn't score, didn't rank quite as high. And so I've put together a couple of different ways that you could choose to proceed. And if I can get guidance from the city council tonight, I will have our consultant put together the final report, hopefully before this key employee leaves the company on Friday. So if you just went with alternative A, projects one through seven, that's, that's going to be closer to alternative A than to alternative B in terms of the, the per-trip cost with $6.6 million in cost being added. While project eight is too, really, I, I arranged these in order of lowest fee to highest fee. And so project eight is really expensive, but we could do one through seven and then add 10 and 11 and still be below the midway point. The third alternative I put together would be the, the projects ranked one through seven plus project nine, which is a more costly project. And I'll go back and, and show you that nine is the Salmonberry Widening Project, where we have flooding near Bethel where the, the culvert has collapsed. Projects 10 is the roundabout at Port Orchard Boulevard and Bay Street. And project 11 is the Sedgwick West construction there in front of the, the Lowe's. And then alternative, the fourth alternative would be the most expensive, and that would just be to, to do the eight highest-ranked projects. But that's going to take you past the midway point in between alternative A and B and, and be the most costly. And so if, if there's any consensus from the council, we can try to get a preferred alternative report put together and then bring that back to you in, in July for adoption.
Is it important to hit the middle or is it more important to get the right projects? I don't know, we were looking for a number, trying to get to a middle. Go ahead, Councilmember Rose Pepe.
You know, I, I think with seven people, we'd probably have seven different ideas. I think what's important to me is that the projects that we pick, that we can do them, both financially and in, in our planning. So that's what's important, important to me is that, you know, we don't try to collect money that we can't spend because I was certainly in favor of the whole enchilada, you know, when we couldn't, we can't spend it in that way. So, I mean, I'm looking, you know, when I look at this, I'm looking at, I'd like to go with the, the ones that probably are the most needed. So I was looking at, unfortunately, probably the most, you know, alternative A plus the projects one through eight for me. That's, that's me.
So you're number four?
Yep, number four.
I'll go next. I'm, I'm number two.
Nick, can you show me that list? Show us that list.
Yeah.
Thank you again, please.
So eight is the Bethel-Sedgwick corridor. And, you know, I'll, I'll, I meant to say this, but part of the reason that this hasn't been on the list in the past is because it is a state highway. And so previous council, the previous council had always said, well, we want the state to take care of that. I think it's unlikely that the state does anything real soon on Sedgwick. Maybe we can get the interchange done, but probably not Sedgwick. And so if we have skin in the game, maybe we're more likely to get coordination with the state if that were to be added. Project nine is that collapsed culvert on Salmonberry where we don't have any sidewalks. And that's, that's sort of connecting that neighborhood to the new roundabout at Bethel. Project 10 is the bottom of Bay Street and Port Orchard Boulevard, a new roundabout. Project 11 was the Sedgwick Road West construction in front of Lowe's. And then project 12 was the Old Clifton-Figley Road Roundabout, which we've talked about before, that if a school happens, that's when that roundabout is going to be needed. You could always add that project to the list later should a school bond pass. But until then, I think that, that project is pretty low in terms of being warranted based on the volume of traffic.
I think I'm a one. I don't think it would take much to twist my arm if we needed to get you the consensus around two, but I think I'm a one.
Sir Deener?
I'm comfortable with number two.
You're number two.
But we're going on what project we want, so that's the.
Well, you guys already ranked them.
Right.
Yeah.
They gave you alternatives in, in groups.
I'm a number two.
Okay.
So. Sorry, my eyes can't see, and I'm looking at this. I didn't know we had to vote tonight.
Well, we're not voting tonight. We're just.
Voting, but we're following our.
Given direction.
Mayor, I'll go to two.
I've made it bigger for you.
I'll go to two.
All right, I've got five people indicating that two is the path, and we'll get the consultant to work, and then we'll bring it back to you guys for consideration.
Yeah, I want the pathway to.
Don't change your mind.
No, I have a tangential question if I can ask it. These rates are for both single-family dwellings and apartment units or just what?
It, it's for trips. So any, any project that generates traffic and its new development is going to pay an impact fee based on how many trips they generate. And so the report will actually spit out a number that is somewhere between the, the alternative A and alternative B on slide two. So the alternative A was $7,044 per trip. Alternative B was $8,900. So presumably, we're going to end up right around $8,000 if we're at that midway point in terms of how many projects we have.
And where are we currently?
We're, I think, $6,400, $6,300.
$1,500. Yeah. All right, comfortable with that? Okay, I'll bring it back. Let's get to our council committees. Economic Development, we met yesterday. Yesterday, that's.
Yesterday, yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We met yesterday. We had a presentation from staff around our Bay Street project and talking around options for timing, funding, what a words are not my friend tonight. Alternative route, detour, thank you. That's the word I'm looking for, would look. That's the word I'm looking for, would look like for our Bay Street project that's still in flux. The mayor did share, I'm probably stealing some of his mayor's report thunder.
Go ahead.
But he got three million dollars from the federal government for that project as well. So we had asked for three million dollars from the state during this budgeting session and we got a million. So lucky, we are fortunate to have been able to been picked by the federal government for that funding as well. We talked about our pre-op meetings. There's a storage facility at the end of Berry Lake in Sydney that had another pre-op meeting. And then somebody's still looking at the former Sherry's over there, has some good activity going on over there. So hopefully that all comes to fruition. And then during our roundtable, we, we talked a couple of different things, including kind of a, a piggyback to the Bay Street project on a, on a possible downtown shuttle. And then the Port Orchard Waterfront Alliance shared, that's the new name for our folks that was formerly POPS, the Port Orchard Bay Street Association, that they have a downtown beautification day scheduled for July twelfth. So that is coming up. They've been doing great things. I would encourage anyone, anyone and everyone to come. And I thought I wrote it down here, but off the top of my head, I want to say it's the fourteenth was our next meeting? I didn't say, but it should be published somewhere.
July fourteenth.
Okay, thank you.
So for the cleanup on, well, who's, who's coordinating that if you want?
So her name's Sarah Butler, she's with the Port Orchard Waterfront Alliance. I'm happy to connect anybody who's looking for that. I also shared with them, I should, yeah, I'll get to coffee with council maybe at the end.
And is the mayor going to talk about the Kitsap Bank timeline? Because he mentioned that.
I've got a mayor's report.
Okay.
So, all right, and we're going to jump to utilities, Councilmember Rose Peck.
I think we talked enough utilities today.
We did, your meeting was largely what we saw in the presentation tonight, that is true. Finance gave a report, I believe, at our last council meeting.
Right.
And transportation, I don't believe you guys have met since our last.
Nope.
Land use, have you met?
Did a report last time.
All right, lodging taxes and hiatus and supervisory, anything to report there?
Uh, no, the only thing that we did is we changed our meeting time to three-thirty and our next meeting is in September when we'll be talking budget.
Okay, on the mayor's report, AWC conference is coming quickly. Every city gets three voting delegates. There's going to be four of us there, so that's voting for the new board members. I'm the chair of the committee interviewing all those folks. So I would greatly appreciate it if you guys would allow me to be one of the voting delegates. But who of the three of you that is attending wants to be the other two? Because we have to register.
Who's going?
You're going, you're going, the three of you.
Does anyone not want to vote?
The business meeting at the end of the conference is when, remember, you go in there?
I will give up my spot, but you, three of you can vote.
Wait a minute.
I asked, you didn't answer, sorry, too slow.
You may not get the ice cream cone if you don't show up.
I'll, I'll find an ice cream cone.
They are good though.
Yeah, okay. All right, that's handled. You're going to get an update on the community event center for my Sturgis Miller on July fifteenth. Something we brought up at economic development too is that semi-parking. And we're looking into that in front of the, the hotel out there on Bravo Terrace is wanting us to add, to change our code to maybe allow a couple of semis to park on the curb in front of the hotel. Public Works is diligently working on this to determine if the road's even wide enough to accommodate that. And that might come back, maybe it'll come to land use in the future. I know Eric sent an email about Boobash with a bunch of information. He and I both have been working that with Sam. I don't think we need to add that as a, as a work-study item, if you concur, Eric. And we're working with, with Sam. They're rethinking that, I don't think they're going to close the road at all. They've got, and their, their expense for the candy, they're going to do the event. They just need to rethink how they're doing it, what they're doing it. And we'll work closely with Sam to make sure that's a success. John talked a little bit about the three million dollar award from Senator Cantwell's office. Timing of that money and it's tied to the federal budget and what all that looks like is, is going to be our biggest challenge. We would love to take the money, but it might get too complicated. And I think the worst-case scenario is if the money gets obligated, but it isn't meeting our timing requirements, that we possibly delay the road construction to 2027 when we build the community center. It's not ideal, but we'll have better, more clarity on this in the fall as, as we move forward. But exciting that we got this federal award and we also got a million dollars from the state. And Fred, go ahead.
I'm sorry to be back up for a second. There's always been this, you know, who goes chicken and egg about.
Yep, I'm waiting, I'm going to go right there next.
Be quiet.
So Nick and I met with the bank on Friday. We're ready to go to constru-, we're going to be ready to go to construction in 2027. We'll have our updated cost estimates for the community center in November. And so all kinds of things are going to come together here as we're doing our mid-year review process. New cost estimates on things, whether or not the timing is going to work on this federal money. So there's going to be a lot of heavy decisions, in particular, the finance committee you'll be working on to, you know, bring to the full council for consideration. But as far as the bank, they, they will, you know, they're, they're still struggling with COVID and what their work, what they need for space, okay? And if they had to pick today, it wouldn't be the three-story building, it'd be a two-story building. But does it make sense to build what you need today? Do you lease the other floor? So they're, I guess, contemplating things still. So they've assured me if we're ready to go in 2027, they need to move people out of their, out of that office space to other locations and to get out of our way. That, that's, that's a definite possibility that that happens. And then in that scenario, they trail us versus going before us. So, Councilmember Dean?
So are they thinking perhaps about live-work units above or are they, they don't want to go?
I don't know that apartments are really part of that mix. I think it's really going to be an, a, you know, a Class A office building, professional building.
And, and what's the latest on them, on their plans for, I know that you said they're kind of.
Well, their, their shoreline permit is married to ours. And so we've got, everybody's got a kind of, they're going to have to make some decisions before the end of the year.
Yeah.
What they're going, where they're going. There's going to be a lot decided in the, by this fall, first of the year for sure.
Okay.
I had, it's one of my favorite things to do. I've got a, and he reminded, Mr. Gerard at Marcus Whiteman Middle School, he lived in the city at one point. And he called me eight or nine years ago to, he emailed me an email or something to complain about something. I don't even remember what it was. And I picked up on, called him and we, we've just developed this relationship. And in the, in years past, I've got a script that I do for a mock city council meeting that I've done in his classroom. But he's got a leadership class. And last year I went to the classroom and this year he brought the students here, the field trip to city hall. And I spent about, about an hour with these, these students. It was a great experience. A lot of, some of it was serious in the beginning and then all kinds of goofy questions about the mayor and what I do and, you know, what my favorite band is and all kinds of stuff. Good, I love interacting with the, with youth. And something that kind of came about out of that and I, and I'm doing one of the sessions about youth engagement at, at the AWC conference. And we had a kind of a pre-working group with two of the other folks that are going to. And these are two, that two cities have a youth seat on their planning commission. And it's a voting member, it's a high school student, so just an idea. All right, and lastly, I got a letter today from the city of Gig Harbor. And no, they're not asking that we annex them, they're in Pierce County, we can't do that. But the letter says, dear Mayor Patonsu, I would like to take this opportunity to formally recognize an invaluable asset provided by Chief Matt Brown of the Port Orchard Police Department. Chief Brown served as our mentor executive as the Port Orchard Police Department navigate, or excuse me, the Gig Harbor Police Department navigated the Washington State accreditation process. In his capacity, he guided us with exceptional skill and professionalism through the rigorous steps required to meet the program's high standards. His extensive knowledge of police administration and best practices was evident throughout the process. Chief Brown thoroughly challenged and validated our existing practices, offering insightful alternative, alternatives that enhance the way we operate. He contributed, his contributions not only improved our department, but also further strengthened our already strong relationship between our two cities. Chief Brown is a credit to the city of Port Orchard, plays a vital role in the regional law enforcement community. Please extend my sincere thanks and congratulations him for exceptionally well-done job. Thank you, Chief.
Good job.
Nicely done. Mayor, if I might, about a year ago, I had the opportunity to speak to the Gig Harbor Chief. And he had nothing but positive praise for our chief and the work that he's, he's done. So I think that that's just, you know, continued attaboy for work well-done, for what you're doing not only for our city, but also within the police community. So thank you.
We're going to roll on to department head reports. Mr. Ryan, what you got?
Good evening again, so a couple of big updates. In the Foster Pilot Project, Big Milestone Friday, we submitted our mitigation, proposed mitigation plan. It is submitted with the state of Washington, Department of Health, Department of Ecology, the Saquamish Tribe and the Squawson Island Tribe. It's been acknowledged, been received by all agencies. And we will start working on negotiations for MOU with the tribes as it's reviewed. We'll have a preliminary meeting tentatively scheduled for the beginning of August to review our submitted materials to, with ecology. So that's on Foster, so moving forward. I wanted to bring up a thought and get consensus of doing voluntary water conservation efforts. As we, as we grow and we have these, we have a very hot spring that we're already looking into. We started tapping into the McCormick, I'm sorry, the Bremerton Water again with the watering and the irrigation that's going on. So a practice that is quite successful is that if we start doing voluntary recommendations of if your address ends in an even number, you would water your yard on an even day, odd number of the month, odd day watering, sorry, odd address, odd day of the month watering. Also some conservation suggestions on the amount of water people actually need to do watering their yards. You only need about an inch, inch and a half, that's not your garden, I'm just talking about your green grass. The idea is it saves you money, it keeps everybody from drinking at the same straw at the same time. So if we can balance our consumption, we will do, be better off with what our reliability is on others to produce our own water. So I just wanted to see if we, if we have consensus on doing this voluntary effort.
So would you guys, how, what do you think about a campaign where we're trying to educate people on water conservation and suggesting that folks water, you know, on, on certain days?
Yeah, we're significantly down in water. We're not in the state drought yet, but for the year, we're significantly down. So I'm in favor of it, anything we can do to educate?
It's, it's our future.
Yep.
Other thoughts?
I don't water my grass anyway.
Yeah, mine's looking a little shabby at the moment. Don't, my HOA hasn't written me a, a note yet, but I will say, when I do finally set it up, it works off of like AI, like it, it, it's Wi-Fi and it turns on and it knows when it rains. So I don't know how to change it to an every other day because it does its own thing when it does. But I, if we're just recommending it, I would say that that's not a bad practice.
We'll, we'll provide some resources.
Yeah, I think some resources. I think most people will probably like it, but there'll be some people that they don't.
We're not requiring it, we're just suggesting education.
I support it, and if we could remind people that they might be saving money too, that could be another benefit.
Absolutely.
Yep, wonderful, anything else, Dennis?
Yes, just want to update on the sanitation contract that we discussed a few weeks ago. We entered into a time-only extension for four months as we get the alternates back to council. And then I just wanted to provide update on the elevator repair. So we are using the Washington State vendor contract. We have, they have founded the part. We are issuing, I think Friday was the PO is being issued to order the part.
I signed it.
So we are moving that as forward as fast as possible, that's it.
And Director Ryan, I just had two cents when you were talking about Foster. While it wasn't related, you said something that triggered something. Got to spend a couple hours out on a boat with Mayor Barber down in Gig Harbor over the weekend. And they were talking about their new dock they're putting in the water. I said, how are you getting a new structure over water done? And so we may, it may behoove us as a city to interact and find out what their secrets are in working with the tribes down south. But they would know what worked because they got it across the finish line. And it's, you know, is it a see-through beer? It's not even see-through. So they, they have some kind of, I hesitate to use the word magic down there, but they might have some insight, so.
I, I was on the water in the same day in the same spot. So I believe that was a replacement dock, replacing the existing one. So that, that could.
I didn't get all the details, I just started asking some questions about, I know, our waterfront stuff. But I would just say that I have no idea, but they got it done, so.
No, we'll, we'll definitely check and collaborate, see if there's an easier way.
Okay, Mr. Crocker?
Mine is real quick, it's not really a finance thing, but I hope you all saw the solar panels are up and operational. So we're going to have some monthly reports on the screens up front for the public to see how much we're producing. But I'd like to report as of twenty-one days of being live and operational, we produce six-point-seven megawatt hours so far, which is about three-hundred-and-fifty kilowatt hours per day. So to put that in perspective, that six-point-seven megawatt hours is enough power to power the average home for at least seven months.
Wow.
So for our perspective, like I tell my staff, it takes roughly three days of solar production to fully, to produce enough power, okay, that would power our entire electric fleet or seven vehicles for an entire month. Three days of power generation can fully power our fleet for an entire month. So just kind of perspective on how much power we generate, it's a lot.
No, how many megawatts again?
Six-point-seven.
Over what time period?
Twenty-one days.
Twenty-one days. I've had a solar array on my house since, and it got turned on in May of twenty-twenty-three. So we are now two years into it. I've put fourteen megawatt hours out in that time period. So you have a mega array out there doing great work.
Yeah.
And, and it's only going to save us money, I pay seven dollars a month. PSC has a flat minimum rate they charge. I give everything back in there, but nice, that's, that's a huge amount of savings.
It's huge, and the other environmental impact, it's roughly about seventy-eight tree, seventy-eight trees planted in CO2 reduction. So we've produced about ten thousand four hundred pounds of CO2, which is the equivalent of planting almost seventy-eight trees, so.
Can you, can you do me one more favor next time, next two weeks? Can you equate that into dollars?
Well, how many do you, trees do you plant, did you hear me?
No, no, I'm talking about the megawatts. If we would have us purchasing that power, the power that we didn't, we didn't purchase.
Yeah, we're, we're still wait, I mean, we're only nine into our first billing cycle.
Yeah, so that, that'll be the exciting.
Yeah, there'll be some.
Well, when it gets paid off. Because, yeah, no, I got a question though on the battery. When you said it lasts like for seven months or equivalent to all the batteries.
There's no batteries on the sword, Ken.
Oh, no, but I meant for, oh, for, oh, for the, the, I thought you said for the EVs that equivalates.
So I said, the amount of power we produce.
Yeah.
Could power an average home for about seven months.
Right.
And another way of looking at, in three days' time of solar production, we can produce enough power that would power our seven-vehicle fleet for an entire month.
Yeah, that's what, yeah, that's what I meant, yes, yes.
Right, so, Mr. Mayor, are we kicking that out newsfeed, letting people know?
We're, we're just starting to get this data and those displays we have. And we're going to put this information up in the lobby. And I'm certain we're going to, once we have more data and can quantify all this, we'll start putting it out in our.
Yeah, that's great news.
Our, in our.
Website.
Yes, thank you. Mr. Bond?
Yeah, I've got two announcements. First of all, I'm going to share my screen here. Our pre-approved ADU program is now live. And so we've updated the website to include both the coming-soon units as well as the existing available units. There's a user guide, there's fee estimates, and hopefully soon we're going to have some cost-to-construct estimates from the KBA. And so I, I'm happy to report that this is the second most shared item on our Facebook page behind the opening of the splash pad. So we're, we're at about fifty percent of the shares comparatively. We also did attend the farmer's market this past Saturday and handed out about seventy-five flyers. And unlike comp plan. And unlike comp plan, where we're trying to get people to talk to us, this is totally people coming to us and saying, oh, what are you guys doing? And so there's a lot of interest. I'd say maybe a third of the people live in the city and the two-thirds are probably not in the city. But we're still getting the word out. So the other announcement, just for next week's council meeting, the middle housing ordinance is coming forward. That's going to be a pretty thick packet. I know you've seen that before, but you may want to start reading ahead on our website before the packet comes out if you want to do a more thorough review.
Remember, that's our second meeting of the month. We don't have a meeting at the end of the month. So. And Councilmember Wardens already informed me that he's on vacation and we'll miss him next week. So he's been excused. So, Ms. Archer, what you got?
I have a couple of topics, but I can save them till next week's meeting. They're not time sensitive. So.
Chief, what'd you learn out in the hallway?
Yes, so I don't know that I learned more, but I wanted to report out to you guys since I had the opportunity to report to them. So on Monday, I did speak with Mr. Weaver from Port of Bremerton and they've signed the trespass agreement and have put up appropriate signage in the parking lots down there and then by the bathroom. So that will give us a little bit, a few more options to deal with folks downtown in the evenings. And we also talked about the importance of them calling us when there are issues. We're a data-driven department. And when we don't have the data, I just had an email that said a week ago, there were loud cars. I can't, I can't service that as well as I would like. So they've agreed to continue calling. But as we already discussed, speeding is an issue throughout our city, throughout our state, throughout our country. We do the best that we can with resources that were provided, but the Port of Bremerton did finally come through. So that's going to give us an extra tool.
That's a big step.
So Chief, one of the things that I think I learned from you a few months back was that in terms of engine noise, if it's stock or it's a factory option, we don't have any, we don't have any pull on that.
That's correct.
But it's a modified. But so were you able to explain to the people that we have no easy way of telling whether it's been a modified exhaust or whether it's a stock?
We spent more talking about just the speeding issues in the drag racing.
Thank you, Chief. You didn't have to step out there and have that conversation with them. I don't speak for everybody here, but thank you.
You're welcome.
Do we have a noise ordinance?
Yes.
We do.
We do. Yeah, I mean, the issues with the loud mufflers, that's not a noise ordinance issue. When it comes to decibel and distance, that's a piece of equipment that we don't have. And as we've explained before, I mean, again, a lot of this is resource-driven. We have other issues that sometimes triage a little bit higher than being able to spend time down there. But the, the teams have been contacting those groups on a regular basis, but we didn't have any means to, other than to politely ask them to leave. We didn't have any other means to ask them to go. And we do now.
Yeah. One thing I heard about the farmer's market every Saturday, they're picking up bottles and glass and cleaning it up because of people down there partying. And so I don't know, have you ever ran into, you know, kids drinking down there or adults?
Yep.
Yeah, because it's too bad they have to, you know, clean it all up before the farmer's market starts.
I don't think that the people that are drinking on the waterfront are the ones that are interested in cleaning up after themselves.
Wow.
What do we got from the clerk's office?
Just a couple of quick things. So the coffee with the council is on July 5th. No one has signed up yet. So just a reminder to let Brain D R I know if you guys would like to attend.
Got one.
Okay, thank you. I'll go ahead and get you down. The second thing is to please let me know by Thursday if you're going to attend. It was the KBA bus tour that you guys were invited to. So far I do have two council members who are attending. So just as a reminder, let me know by Thursday. And I have to ask, Mayor, what was your favorite band?
It depends on what I was listening to that day. But, and that day it was Van Halen. So, you know, I'm running around in a convertible right now. I think it's the Beatles today. All right. HR, what you got, Debbie? Anything? All right, we're going to get to our second citizen comment period. This is Shannon in the audience. And Jerry.
Mr. Turner.
Why not? You hung out till the end.
I want to say thank you for inviting me. I remember. Your inclusion, me, hands down, I would say impressive. Awesome job. I have seen some reports and things taking place. But what I just heard, what I just witnessed was very impressive because you guys are continuing to do what you have up there with your team. And you have a great team. And they understand the goals. Everything is so tangible. Everything is just rapid, rapid, and it's getting better here at them. You're not giving up. So the team that you put together, your committee is just great. It's phenomenal. I would say I would take this very seriously and do a report out because you guys are the only ones I see that are actually doing the work. And so I would say, you know, it wasn't always clear if you're going to come here. But it's changed and it starts from within. And I know Chief Brown, I talk a lot. It starts from within, best of leadership. And so I commend you guys for sticking to it and putting this down. Most importantly, your community says it all right there. So I commend you. And I thank you, John.
Appreciate your comment.
Thank you. Thanks.
Jerry, go ahead.
I just went along with the elevator going to be out of service because if there was another policeman here in playing clothing and if he hadn't been coming down the steps because I probably would not have been up like this.
Yeah.
He cared that the last steps was two of the citizens that coming up. I was kind of pushing my ability at the.
Wow.
I signed the purchase order on the parts on Friday. So I think we believe, and so soon as they can get the parts in and get it repaired. So we want it fixed very badly. It's easier going down though. You've got that little cart and just buckle up and write it down. I don't know. No? All right. Yes, I know. I didn't, I didn't mean to make light of it, but we're, as soon as they can get the parts in, it's going to be repaired. We know what's wrong with it. Yeah. Yeah, it's great to see you here again. All right. Anybody else? Anybody online? Janine, if you wish to address the council, raise your hand.
Yeah, we have one person and they have not raised their hand.
Okay. Eric, anything for the good of the order? Good to see you there.
Yeah, I do. Yeah, thanks for asking. This last Friday, we had the 2025 senior grad parade. And it was, it was by far the biggest darn thing that we've ever done. It's a lot of work. It's just my friend Kim and myself that do it. So it's, it's a lot of work, but it's more, more than worth it. But I just want to thank Chief Brown and his staff for, for working with us. You know, we hire a professional company to, to do all of the traffic control, all that good jazz. And things are never perfect, but Chief Brown walked the whole thing with me and we tried to button up areas and add to next year's punch list, you know, certain things that need to get corrected. But I really, really appreciate it. Clerk's office, for sure. I appreciate you guys. Chris and all the public works people. I also want to thank Heidi and Fred for going down there and standing next to road closure signs because we needed more volunteers. That was extremely helpful. Morrissey was down there and Scott Deener. Another, another year, Scott walks Port Orchard Boulevard afterwards and picks up tubs of trash to make sure everything is all picked up for us. And it's a lot of work. He picked up not just what the kids left, but he picked up a lot of other signs and whatnot too. So I really, really, really appreciate all you guys that helped us out because it's a huge, it's a huge effort. But I know the school district, I know all the kids, for sure, all the families. They really, really enjoy it. It means a lot and will continue to try to get better at it. But all you guys' help is, we are, we are extremely thankful. So thanks so much.
Thank you, Eric.
Yeah, nice job, Eric.
Thank you, Eric.
All right. Anything else for the good of the order?
Yeah, maybe I should quick do a coffee council.
Go ahead.
Okay. It was Councilmember Ternary and myself. I sent off my report to, ooh, I probably should have CC'd Ms. Janine. Do you have access to the clerk's email? Okay. All right. So I need to make sure I get that. But we were busy from ding to dong. There wasn't a ton of volume of folks, but we had people there for a long period. We met a new city inhabitant by the name of Christopher, shared a bunch of great insights about things that he had from Oxnard, yes, California. We interacted with a lady by the name of Amanda. She's looking to stand up a permitting consultant business right here in Kitsap. And she goes, I go, yeah, that I'm sure there's always lots of jurisdictions. I just encouraged her to get in touch and we can connect with folks. Dale came in and talked about a great website called JustServe.com. You should check it out. It's where you can put volunteer opportunities out there for the general public. I thought that was pretty cool.
John, dot org.
Sorry.
Profit.org.
Thank you. I got that wrong. And I think I put that wrong in my email too. Mark Keinsu came to talk about an affordable housing project he's working on. And then we did have the couple that are in litigation with the city up here. And they're very polite. They just, their biggest thing for us, because we said we couldn't talk about it. They just wanted to make sure that council was aware. And all we, we did let them know that council was aware. So hopefully our council would tell me that we could say that, but we did. So that was it.
Thank you for that report. Our meeting is adjourned.
So, well, anyway, I didn't talk to it. So I brought up at the utility.